Our Green, Chair of the Select Board, and this is the Select Board's Summer Workshop Meeting. We have special workshop meetings throughout the year to address important issues that are too complex and extensive to incorporate into our regular meetings. Over the last couple of years, the Summer Workshop has been critical as the opening steps in the budget process. The Select Board, as a chief executive body of the town, must play an active role, a strong role, and an effective role in the financial management of the town for each fiscal year and for longer planning periods. Last year, we focused on improving the role of the Select Board's goals and objectives in the fiscal year budget process and strengthened the processes that integrate the Select Board's goals and objectives into the budgeting by town department. This year, our goals and objectives have been written to be more focused on the fiscal year for which we are preparing the budget, plus a separate set of goals, I think I can call it that, for the next five or so years that we're calling the 2030 roadmap. The purpose of the goals and objectives in the 2030 roadmap is to make the Select Board's views known to town departments as they begin their fiscal budget work in September and as they think about their medium-term needs and priorities over the next few years. Of course, like all Select Board meetings, they have some housework to do in our miscellaneous calendar, approving licenses and contracts and various miscellaneous items, and our regular calendar, under which, in addition to the 2030 roadmap and goals and objectives, we're going to review and vote on an amendment to our unfunded liabilities policy and then vote on two appointments to the Park and Recreation Commission. We don't take public comment during these workshop meetings, but if Select Board members have any updates, comments, or statements, please say from now. Okay, I don't think so.
I did want to just remind the public of something. So Tuesday, August 5th, is National Night Out. Maybe a lot of people are familiar with National Night Out. It really is a national event. Police departments all over the country on the first Tuesday in August conduct events that are aimed at allowing the public to meet and find out about their local police department, become better acquainted face-to-face with members of the department. And Brookline always does kind of a bang-up job with it. They have very good participation and it's a popular event. So Tuesday, August 5th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., you can meet local members of the local police department behind the in the area of Brookline Avenue Playground and what's known as the Lynch Center. And there'll be bounce house houses, obstacle courses, a cane line demonstration, a truck, large entertainment. It's a lot of fun. Sorry, I just want everybody to know Tuesday, August 5th, 5:00 to 8:00.
Thank you, John. Okay, let's move on to our miscellaneous calendar, starting with the minutes for July 15, 2025. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes?
You've got one second.
Okay, good. So as amended, I move approval of the minutes for July 15, 2025. All in favor, please give us a saying hi to our members.
Hi.
To Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Farman.
Hi.
And to Ruth Sun.
Hi.
Chair Gozai. Next, I move approval in omnibus fashion of items 3B to 3T. Unless any member would like to pull something out of that list to discuss it in more detail. Anyone want to do that? Okay, so I move approval of items 3B to 3T of our miscellaneous calendars. All in favor, please give us a say hi. To Matt Soyet.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Farman.
Hi.
Michael Riemstein.
Hi.
And Chair Gozai. Okay, let's get into the meat of this meeting, our regular calendar. And we start off with a 2030 roadmap. And may I introduce Abby Fohl, and she's going to lead us through this roadmap.
Thank you, Bernard. Ms. Chad, did you want to say anything before I leave?
No, I think I just want to thank the board for their engagement on this. As Abby's going to talk through each of our members supporting individually. This is, we're really grateful for your participation and thoughtful responses to this. This is something that we here often have been department heads that they see the board's guidance, not just in terms of, you know, where the folks community is on a daily basis. Where the folks community is on a daily basis. It allows us to focus on things that matter to you, that bear full address in the community. So we're very grateful for what you've already done on this and look forward to this especially.
Thanks, Chad. I'm going to attempt to share screen. Well, I'll just start again. So everyone, yes, Abby Fohl, for those online, I work at a nonprofit called the Consensus Building Institute. We're based in Cambridge. And I am very much looking forward to working through the development of this 2030 roadmap with all of you. I appreciated our calls that we had the last few weeks. Everyone, you all care a lot about this town and have a lot of insights and really a thoughtful approach to your responses. So I think this is going to be a lovely process. We, there is a planning team that's working to kind of guide this. So it's not just me in a room making up what I think we're playing the benefit from in this process development. It's with, and we're in the Select Board Office, and John here is the Select Board rep there. Not intended to be a closed box. If you have any questions, please do let us know. So the agenda for today is really intended to be exploratory. I know you've been thinking about this for a year or so to put out this bid and take it off. Now we're all together, so I want to spend a little time making sure on the, you know, strong foundation of what the goal here is and what would be most useful to you. So I'm going to reflect back some of the things I heard from our interviews and make sure that sounds okay. And then we're going to spend a lot, most of the time talking about potential opportunities and goals, which are in first of all, does everyone have this packet? There's an agenda and a printout of the report. Okay. And I'll just say, we were in a bit of a rush to get to this meeting, the summer calendars and everything, but we're not in a rush in this process. I think we have through May. So I think now that we're here, we can move a little slower and make sure we're very thorough and iterative as we go. Okay, so let me, so we're going to spend, yeah, the first little bit talking about some of the key takeaways from the assessment, and then we'll have more discussion based. But if you have any questions as we go, please let us know. Okay, and what I'm going to present, I just put together a few slides that are really pretty much exactly what's in this report. So if you want to follow along in that, that's great. Okay, I think I've heard two ideas of what the purpose of this roadmap is. One is really just to capture the shared priorities of all of you, to make sure we have those on paper. And so we understand the town, understands the government, understands what are your shared priorities. And then also with that, to guide your own work, the Select Board's office works, and the town. That's the purpose. There are a few things you all shared that we should be kind of aware of as we go through this. One is, again, just that it's not just one of your priorities, that it's really like there's a mass here of people that want to see these things happen, that these are strategic priorities, so it's not trying to list every possible goal in the town in one document. That's not what this effort is. There is a concern about just adding goals and actions rather than making sure you're meeting the obligations that the town already has and the departments are meeting those obligations. And also, well, yeah, I think I'll probably get there. Definitely have heard the request to pull from existing content. And this is something that I have noticed alive and looking through a lot of the existing strategic plans from departments. I've been looking through your fiscal year task goals and objectives, your website. Like you have a lot of information about priorities and thoughts from like town members and departments. So when possible, pulling from that so you're not reinventing the wheel in this process. I've heard an interest in having this document be informed by what the departments are doing and then also serving to guide them. So this is an interplay that we're going to work through in this process. Like one, this is the Select Board's document, so we don't want to have it necessarily be overtaken by what the department goals are. But we also want it to reflect their goals when possible. And if there's tension there, we need to talk about it. I'm not quite sure how this is going to look. I think we'll have to see how this process continues based on how much alignment there is.
That's a very important point because, you know, the Select Board and town staff, while we don't have a conflicting interest, we have an interest in that.
Yeah.
And we should always be aware of that, that we're more sensitive to the community and the demand of the community. And while we have to, you know, listen to those demands from the perspective of what's practical, et cetera. We said there were different things.
So I think right now, I think it's like, let's pay attention to that as we go. And if it comes up, we will figure out how to. Okay, one thing we all talked about is, and I think everyone is in agreement, but I want to make sure that this document does not need to include a town vision or mission as part of it. And here's why I think the rationale is, is like there, you will have the town vision. There's a comprehensive plan vision that's being drafted. I think no one wanted to spend more time creating another one, and they didn't feel it was the most useful way to spend our time here. So just, can we, do we agree, do you all agree with that?
We'll forget the fact that it is.
I will say, let me ensure this next point, and then I see a physical look somebody comes to you, Michael. But I also heard some interest in including an overarching guiding value statement, perhaps. There are a few cross-cutting like values that some of you mentioned in our interviews. And it could be nice to maybe include these overarching guiding values that are supposed to inform the rest of the work. So there's still a bit of the like, what are the values guiding this? But it's not going through the effort to say what exactly you want the town to look like in 2030. How does that sit with you?
How is that different from the mission statement?
Yeah, Bernard, it's a good question. I think a mission statement would be what the Select Board or the government does to get to a vision or what you want to see. And I proposed, based on what I heard, some like ideas of guiding values. Could we come back to that question and then we'll get those together?
Yeah.
Yeah, thoughts, John?
Just a quick comment. First of all, I want to say that already, you know, and this is only five or 10 minutes into this meeting, I'm reminded of how good I feel about the way this has been conducted. It feels to me like we've really learned from our past efforts at as good as you're planning. And we're making real progress in kind of figuring out the best way to do it, you know, and to get to some sort of achievable result. So, you know, I want to offer my thanks to Chad and to the staff and to the presenter for, you know, bringing it this far already. Okay, I really just at the beginning of the meeting. But I did want to say one thing about the idea of vision statement, whether we have to have it or not, whether it's useful or not. One of the things I found useful was just the fact that you raised the question in your interviews with us as to, does our vision statement align with vision statements that have been developed by other groups with our encouragement? So we have, and falls within our limits of involving you, we have this comprehensive planning process. And I thank you for including New York Two Centers for our consideration, their version of, you know.
There's three right there.
Well, that's what happens when you first do a vision statement. But, and one of the things I said in my interview with you is, you know, on consideration, I think maybe the version that you sent us from the comprehensive planning process is a little bit fuller. It's a little bit more clear to me. But it's a very important question for us to be asking, you know, what's the point in our having a mission statement? If it isn't the same as the vision statement of the comprehensive planning process or the vision? You know, I have a town with, you know, five different versions of what our vision for the future is. So I like that we've been asked to consider, you know, whether we even need a vision statement. But if we're going to have one, how does it line up with other people's versions of what a vision for Brookline's future should look like? I just want to say that.
Thank you, and thank you, Abby, for the summary. So I had my interview the day after you sent the information out. And of course, since then, I've also had one time to reflect. It was somewhat changing, I think, a little bit of understanding. But one of the things that I wanted to clear in my own head was in terms of the purpose of the roadmap, how much of it is a guiding document for, you know, the Select Board Office in particular versus the sort of broad set of departments versus a communication vehicle for the entire town? And I think that those things aren't necessarily the same. So for example, when we talked about the need for governance and communication, that's, that may be a need and a point of interest for either the Select Board Office or internally within the organization. But in terms of communicating the roadmap to the town and meeting the town's needs, that's a much broader and obviously there's a lot more stakeholders, a lot more innovation to be done. And so that clarification, I think, will be important.
I could take a pass at sharing with my understanding here, but then I would really open up to Select Board Office to maybe correct us or add in clicker. My understanding is that this is really meant to be quite internal. And I think the question about Select Board Office versus departments is one that we should get some clarity on if there is a focus. But I don't believe this was ever envisioned as having a lot of broader engagement as part of it. And where you all think it would be helpful to learn from members of residents in Brookline, I think the comprehensive planning effort is doing so much engagement that, one, we could look there and see if there's advice. Or I think I'm forgetting, I'm sorry, the person saying he was leading that effort. If he did say they're, you know, they're going to do another bunch of engagement in the fall. And if we want to seed any questions that you all want some responses on, we could give those questions to that team that was doing community.
You talked about Paul or Jacob. Well, he's Jake, Jake Collins is the person leading that. But also, remember, we have an abundance of community. But we've got a comprehensive plan, we've got the chip, we've got our recently completed open space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we are not, we don't, we're not short on, so we've got lots of. I happen to agree that this be more of an internal document for guidance to the Select Board Office and staff. And I think the second bullet on your initial slide is probably one of the most important ones is to be able to give some firm grounding for staff to be able to have planning for the future versus getting this whittled out every time that a new member joins or something changes. And in order to be able to be effective with executing planning, it needs instability. Anything else important?
And building up that question for the audience in turn. I do think it's valuable for us in the Select Board Office to have this document as kind of a North Star. A guiding point for us to then take to begin partners. But I do think there would probably be goals and objectives that you develop as this process goes on that may rest more at some margins than others and may be more relevant to their operations than others. But that we take this as the opportunity to be in the Select Board Office, take this as the opportunity to, yes, it's the way I use, you use, that it's up to us to figure out how to work with departments to get to that. So we'll be signing out those things. But we'll still have that value to the departments, particularly in businesses like what Paul talked about. If someone, if, you know, we get a committee or a group that is very interested in a particular course of action that conflicts with this document, show them the document, say, hey, you know, it's not that we don't value the idea of judgment, but the Select Board is the executive, the set that says the priorities and use it there. You know, I think it could be why I have that. And then say, that's the conversation to have with your elected officials rather than feeling the departments necessary, potentially feeling pulled in different directions, different, you know, sources of being able to say, this is, this is our, this is what we come back to at the end. So that's kind of the hope on that. We will play the implementing role in that, and some of the departments will be more involved depending on what their goals and objectives are.
The only thing I want to add here is internal document transparently shared. I think this kind of the discussion has this unfolded. So folks in the community can see it. And then it's helpful, Michael, kind of the next phase of interviews with Abby is to have cross-section interviews with department division heads to connect kind of the conversations she's been having with you, which is happening with you today, and bring that all together. Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Okay, I'm going to move us forward. I just wanted to highlight a few points you all shared about the implementation of the roadmap. I think this is a really high priority for a lot of you, that this document is implementation focused. So I think just like in a very tactical way, what that means to me when I think about it is it's not going to be a 70-page narrative document necessarily. Like I'm picturing some timbles, for example, of like, here's the overarching goal here, the subactions. Who's responsible? Maybe it's in one of the hands of the Select Board, maybe it's in one of the departments. Are there any initial like actions that need to be taken? What's, is this a one-year priority? Is it a three-years and a five-year priority? So really, as like implementation focused as possible is the feedback that I've heard from you all. I also, there were some discussions we had about how to evaluate progress. And I think this is an important thing for a lot of you. So I think at some point in this effort, we're going to want to talk through like, what's the right schedule to check in on progress? Is it yearly? Is it when you do your budget goals? I'm not sure. We should, like, we'll have to discuss this. Not today. I heard interest in like a very simple evaluation process. So it's not, I think someone said, you don't need to boil the ocean to just do the evaluation. Like if you want it to be quick and relatively easy so that it can happen. And then a few people talked about accountability measures, like what happens if this doesn't happen? Some of these goals, like what, what's the check-in process? Then there were a few folks who brought up, how are these, who asked, how are these priorities going to get updated? Would it be at the end, like in 2030? Are you then, or is whoever the Select Board is then, are you then working on the 2035 roadmap? Or in 2026, are you working on a 2031? Again, let's just keep this in our heads as we go. I think this like implementation and evaluation process discussion can happen a little later. Just wanted to reply to that. Okay. So there's a slight lag on the slide I think there. I won't go too much in the weeds. I think I tried to talk this through with everyone, the process that we're envisioning right now as I talked to all of you in the Select Board Office, we did some, we talked through kind of the framing, what's going well, what can be improved in the town, potential initial priorities, or having this workshop to discuss those, see if we can firm up any of those initial priorities. Then I'll go, as Tiffany just mentioned, and talk with department heads in some of the division heads and try to understand what their key priorities are. And then also ask, is there anything that they are wanting guidance on from you? Like, is there anything that actually would be helpful? Like, we don't know where the Select Board is on this, and it would be really helpful. So I want to, I want to understand that so you can understand that. And that's when the like top-down input and the bottom-up input is going to intermix, and it might be messy. There's not a lot of alignment, and we'll have to figure out the best way to do that. We could do like small focus groups on specific issues. We could do one-on-one discussions. I'm not sure. We'll have to see what's going to work. Then we'll come back together. We'll share all these goals and objectives, which are the morally actionable pieces, and make sure that's all sitting well with you. And then there's going to be the process of talking through implementation and then a draft. Or then, okay. So I wanted to share some of the results from the questions I asked you about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in the town. I'll just say, the reason we ask this kind of questions in a strategic planning type process is for strengths. Like, we want to know what can you leverage in this process? What do you have that's working really well that you might want to try to accentuate in your goals? Weaknesses and threats, like what do you need to plan around or adjust or plan for? And then the opportunities, I'm going to share last because I've put those into like potential priority areas and goals. Basically, that would form the content of the roadmap. Okay. And please stop me. I'm sorry. I want to, I want to get to the point where we're discussing things, so I'm trying to speed through, but let me know if it's too fast. Okay, some of the strengths I heard, well, just generally across the town government, is that people are your strength. You have like really good working relationships, it seems like, both within the Select Board, from the Select Board to the Select Board Office, and the Select Board Office to the departments. I've heard that the Select Board is extremely functional and respectful and collegial, which is awesome. And that's not always, I've worked, you know, with other elected bodies, and that's not always the case. I think you have a leg up in here, which is great. I hear that there's like really an active effort by the chair and others to make sure that like all Select Board voices are incorporated into decision-making. I've heard that you've had some really successful hires and appointments, which is like a huge function of what you do. So that's nice to hear. I've heard that you have had some successes in legal processes, like knowing when to settle and working with people or when to not. And then also that you all are engaged in the town and in your neighborhoods, and that you're very open to receiving public comment and you engage with them. To share some of the strengths I heard around the Select Board Office and staff, sounds like there's been a nice filling of department head spots, and there's reduced turnover, which is a pretty marked change, I think, in the town government. So that's great. I've heard that, and one thing I've learned about Brookline is that there are a lot of boards and commissions. And I think that the, I've heard that the Select Board Office does a good job of helping coordinate them and trying to mix up and having more diverse membership on those bodies. That they have been successful in helping distinguish what's policy and the Select Board's purview, and then what's in the implementation. There's been proactive work around responding to financial risk from federal. There is a high level of rigor in the work, and that there's very. Um, there is a high level of rigor in the work, and that there's very, uh.
I'm curious about Verizon. Do we know the status of Verizon providing?
I think we're back.
Put back on.
Okay. Um, how do I? I don't know how to get rid of it.
It's on TV.
Is it?
Yeah, Jennifer, over there.
Well, I don't know what I'm standing. Okay, so we have resumed. Thanks for folks online. We lost connection there. Um. Paul, you were gonna?
Yes, I, I paused while we were done. So we're back on. So just an added um, strength, although we don't always consider a strength, but I would say our current form of government has input to the select board. So town meeting and the relationship between the select board and town meeting, uh, which I believe is respectful, but also the opportunity to hear from town meeting and get feedback from the community. Um, that has been a strength uh, for us, and I think it's an important one to recognize and continue that. Uh, a strong relationship and communication of the community.
Thank you. Um. We can add. You'll handle that.
Oh, yeah.
And then maybe I'll get. It's awesome. Okay. Um, so just one other specific success was the um, speaking of the commissions and boards, is that there was a handbook in Co-It contact me, which seems, I guess, been played. Okay, so that was very rosy. We're gonna move to a few of the weaknesses now. Um. And again, these are like things that we might wanna keep in mind as we go through this process. Um. And obviously, I think some of the weaknesses shared are also just like inherent in being a governing body and having a town government. So I, I'll just note that I'm not, some of these might not be specific to Brooklyn, but they might just be specific to being a, a town government. Um, so one weakness I've heard was that sometimes there can be slow response and hesitation to experiment. This is like the flip side of being so careful and methodical in your work that then you're, it's hard to pivot, it's hard to do an experimental like pilot or something. Um, open meeting law limitations I heard make it challenging for like select board members to just, you know, get a coffee together, get to know each other, which, you know, relationships are important to decision-making and collaboration. So I think that can, I've heard that can be a challenge. Um, and then also I've heard that open meeting law limitations make it hard to, like if there is an event or crisis or something in the town, um, it's hard for you all to like put out a joint statement together. And sometimes people wanna hear from elected officials in that situation, but you can't coordinate offline, um, due to the open meeting. Um, and which kind of connects to this next person is like, sometimes it feels like there's a lack of a figurehead or spokesperson for the town who maybe would again respond in a crisis, maybe if someone emails all of you together and who's gonna respond, and you can't really coordinate offline about that, or in like a regional meeting, who goes and like represents Brooklyn and tries to get your interest met outside. Um, and then I also heard that um, in recent time, there has been less input on warrant articles from select board members. Maybe in the past, there was more active um engagement in the development process. Um, and so some folks just noted that that was a challenge, and that some warrant articles being brought um, are not always cognizant or aware of some of the like financial or policy directions of the town. Um, and it could be helpful for them to reflect that. Um. Okay, I've heard that, yes, there are a lot of commission portions that is a great way to be connected to residents, and sometimes they're redundant of each other and inefficient. Um, and so maybe like, uh, if there's any more help for those commissions and board or an evaluation, um, or ways to check in with them, it might be helpful with the process. Um, there were some concerns around communication and this idea that if you, if you're a resident living in Brooklyn and you wanna learn what's happening in the town, you should be really proactive and go to the website, and then you dig through the website. Um, and there's not, it would be helpful to have more active communication to residents. Um, I've heard that a weakness is that there are like loud voices have an outsized weight from community members. Um, and I think the concern is wanting to be making sure decisions reflect all residents of, of Brooklyn. Um. That there is limited, like you have a lot of policies, but the enforcement of them is not always as strong, whether this is a staff capacity issue, if it's a loud voice issue, I'm not sure, but maybe something rest mind. Um, and then I also heard that there has been limited collaboration with the school committee, although I understand that's getting better, especially with David coming from them to hear. Um, but something to keep in mind, because they are really closely linked both in how people think about the school district in the town, um, and like financially too. Okay, I'm gonna, we're gonna go to threats, and then we'll pause, and we can just quickly discuss some of these things. Um, so threats, first weakness, usually threat is seen as something that's like outside that could be a risk to the town. I wasn't so strict in exactly how I categorize some of these things. Um, structural deficit, I have heard, is a huge topic on most people's minds. Um, that's and I'll just say, like, right now, it seems people are concerned that the current financial approach is not very stable and to the future, which is right now, it's to cut expenditures as much as possible, and then to ask voters for a pro to and a half override every two years. And I think there's concern that the amount is boiling of what's needed, and this is unhelpable. And so at some point, it's not gonna happen, and it's gonna put the town in a really challenging situation. Um, this also leads to like the national political crisis and reduced funding available. So I've really heard like financial concerns as a key thing on people's minds. Um, I've heard that, so one way to um, help the structural deficit would be to have more new net revenue. Um. Largely being like commercial and maybe even residential development, and that you all are pretty built out as a town. And so the question is like, where would that go? And is there resident support for it? Um. I also heard again financially that there are a lot, like Brooklyn has a lot of really impressive town services that are now come to be relied on or expected from people. And so if you try to cut those, that will be very challenging, because people are expecting it. Um, other threats were like another public health crisis, climate crisis, which has really specific risks on both public health and infrastructure. Um, and then again, the national political threats, the funding. There was um, identification of, you know, a lot of residents here work in hospitals and universities, which are being targeted by federal funding cuts. Um, and then also for immigrant residents, and that this is like a scary and time for immigrants. Um. I would say, I think one challenge we'll, we're all gonna have to keep in mind through this process is like this will be most successful if we focus on what's within your jurisdiction. And so, yes, there are a lot of threats out there. Um. But I would encourage you to think through like where you actually take action to start addressing some of these, if it's just like an existential threat. Um, mildly worthy to think about. I don't think there's that much time to spend on it in this process.
And I before you walk, um, maybe you're cautious. Um, I don't see demographics shifts up there. I don't know how to figure it out, but that would definitely be a threat to both understand and consider.
Can you be a more explicit?
Well, there, there's really, there's really two things. Um, one, maybe they should be separated. One is just the aging of our population in general, um, and the tendency over time to have smaller families. Um, uh, and the other is an economic has to do with economic demographics, and that Brooklyn is transitioning more into a place where there are, you know, really wealthy, um, or well-off or well-connected uh, population. And then there is a population here that is primarily through some form of assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whether it's government assistance or uh, family assistance. Um, and there is a mill that is sort of getting part of that. That which has a lot to come to consequences for the pain.
I think we can definitely capture that threat, and I'll show you how I, where I put that in a minute, too. And I'm happy that, I'm happy to add.
At least one other demographic change is very significant, and that is racial polarization down. Since um, the last census, our Asian population has exploded. At the same time, many of these residents um, are under attack, you'd say, either temporarily and under temporary visa or um, for, for educational purposes. And that's gonna have an impact on a variety of things, like school population, um, but also, um, you know, housing. Uh, housing, maybe in a positive way, but uh, um, I think that, that, that is what I think we have, we have to really think about.
Right. I do wanna be careful though how we phrase that, because having changing racial demographics on the threat page without an explanation might be disturbing.
It might also be on the opportunity page. Exactly. I prefer it on the opportunity page, but I fully understand what you're saying. But just
Okay.
I think the title matters.
Yeah, but I think there's the fact that, you know, it's somewhat a threat that is challenging, that we have to um, be very conscious of and figure out ways of countering the impact. Uh, or figuring out ways of working on how to impact.
All right. Well, I can put a little bit of thought of how, I think I understand the point and understand the point around like how it's read, if someone's not.
Well, the threat is that we, that we're not adjusting our policies plans as the demographics change. We're not ahead of it.
Yep. Okay. Um. Let me, there's a few more. Um, one, someone mentioned that just not having clarity on the select board's goals creates like whiplash for staff and could be a at risk of staff retention challenges. So, and but they also acknowledge like, but this process is exactly trying to address that. So that was, you're already working on one of the threats that we mentioned. Um, someone shared um, growing lack of trust of town staff by residents. Um, and there was specific reference to some of the sanitation privatization conversations that came up, and I think this idea of like are people trusting their, their government? And if they don't, then that's, there can be some challenges there on how they're able to govern. Um, and then someone also shared, it's not necessarily a threat, they wouldn't, they didn't call it that, but that this potential form of government change, it's, you know, on people's minds and maybe considered by the town would be a huge shift in what is currently happening. So again, not a threat necessarily, but that's something to be there to prepare. Okay, let me show you one more thing, and then let's hear everything about some of these. Um. Okay, so potential guiding bounds. Um. I, I'm not necessarily wanting us to like spend time wordsmithing this list right now. We could do that later. Um, but I wanted to try to capture some of like what I heard from your conversations as like overarching values. And to Bernard's point, some of these do read mission, vision-esque, and like, I don't maybe don't tell the strategic planning police or something, but like, I don't think it really matters here. I think the idea is that you, there are some things you want to guide all of the work that's going to happen. It's like really on top of everything that's gonna come next. Um, I heard three things. One, that Brooklyn is a welcoming, and then racial, racially, ethnically, and economically diverse community to your point. Like, I think I heard that interest from a lot of people. Um, there's this really strong value of that, like all voices are heard and incorporated into decision-making in the town, whether that's through like improving some of the boarding commission work, um, through individual like engagement efforts. Um, and then also this idea that good governance and collaboration across the government will make work better. So those were some of the, the key points that I heard as values. I'm, I'm really curious to hear what people think about these, um, and like if there's any like missing category. Yeah.
So I think th- these are good. Um, one of the things that I think we're getting feedback as part of the company's planning process, and I'm gonna phrase this, but so I may get the words wrong. Um, but uh, visibility is the future predictive. So if you wanna start a business, we we need to feel that it's a stable environment, uh, just if you're gonna invest, if you're gonna move to Brooklyn for whatever reasons you decide to come, that you can count on some stability uh, in the future. So that probably translates into, you know, transparency um, of, of, you know, future plan. Um, and also, uh, you know, how change does occur? Uh, does it, does it incorporate the, the community of that's within the community? So I, I kinda say that visibility and stability, I guess, is the way to say it. I, I won't get the words right.
You have time to do that.
Yeah, um. Looking at the first one. How, how would a black person view that? Uh, Brooklyn is clearly racially diverse. It's mainly, it's mainly an Asian population. Um, which is a real strength of the community. But in terms of what people think of it racially diverse, which is black, mainly black, but also Hispanic population, we are way behind the curve. Uh, so to say that we are racially diverse is kind of viewed as not true. So I mean, I think we have to figure out ways of saying that, that, that um, people perceive as being more like that.
I think that's a really good point, probably because this one, as I was just putting it down, I was like, this is a vision. This is not yet. Like, I heard this as an aspiration and a hope. And so I think you're right, that right now this is R. And maybe it shouldn't be like, we want to encourage this, and want this to be.
What should be?
Or should, right. So I think that's, yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, um. Okay. We're, we'll get back to this point, but um. I think climate, climate, like I heard climate as a top priority for some of you. Uh, right now I have it as its own category. It could also be considered as an overarching value that you want to be preparing for climate change in all of the work that you do. Um, we, I only need to resolve it, but just something to sit on.
So to that point, and to what Paul was talking before about sort of how people view the future of coming along. You know, transparency, disabilities, stability, viability. Um, the other, the other sort of I don't know whether this is complimentary or countervailing, but, but the sense that as a government, we have the capacity to navigate a change and make progress. You know, that we may, may not be where we want to be in any one of these values to, to your point, um, but that we actually can get from where we are to to make progress.
Nice.
I was changing my own events.
Well.
Right, I know, that's part, yeah, you know, having a capacity means that you're willing to change.
Adjusting.
And I should think, adjusting.
Adjusting to change.
There's like a resilience aspect to it.
Well, there's, there's a resilience. It could be in the, you could consider change in a threat category, you could consider change in the opportunity category, both. So, so, you know, it's included both.
Um, I want, I do want us to move on, so we have enough time to talk through the priority areas and opportunities. Anything like on your mind about all of what was shared that you feel like needs to be said, you know?
I mean, see, the, the, the hot issue in this community as well as this country, this house, and I guess I didn't seem that, that, that talked about that.
We have a, one of the like priority areas is housing.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I guess it's true. It didn't show up as I think the, I think the lack of space to develop was a, was a source of.
We have lots, we have lots of space to develop, which is the way it is.
Hmm. Yeah, we don't wanna lose our, uh, golf course. Um, I know. Um, but I'm thinking more in terms of, you know, it is really a value in town to address the housing crisis that we have here as well as the broader, and that has a value. It's not just, you know, a goal, a goal.
It isn't?
Well, I guess like, you know, prioritizing services, people could.
Yeah.
Good, good question. For some people, and maybe, maybe the issue is, who are we talking for?
Right, I mean from my perspective, the reason that housing is a priority in terms of what we do is because it fosters the values that we talk about there, especially at first. Right, so, so the value that, that's
Yeah, I think that's a means.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right, potential, it's a means, right?
Yeah.
But also our value of green space, right, and access to green space. In Brooklyn, we have two-point-two acres per thousand. Was the answer, right? Because the national guidance standard is ten.
Yeah.
It was ten thousand, so you're, you know, as you increase density, that counterbalances climate and also. But that counterbalances climate and also, right, research.
And I, so let's have this conversation, we'll get some of the potential opportunities or priority areas. And I think this is actually something that. Definitely will continue to come up because I think one thing you're being asked to do here is like. Staff are having to make those pretty often decisions right now, right? Like. Green space or housing, right? It's sometimes bearing specifically on a personal, like what are we gonna do here? And I think they're looking for your ideas on on how to handle that. And that is, those are big questions. And like we have a few months, I don't think we need to like resolve it today, but I think you're picking up on like a a key tension here. In land use development.
Um, the. The only thing that I would add before you run, you made a comment earlier in strength about the handbook.
Yeah.
Um, I will say that the handbook is pretty new and not really tested. Um, so. So I would be caution to like claim success there before we actually know.
So then first step, let's see.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, good.
And I would be truly.
I'm understanding what you're saying, though. Um, we've been going through a process of trying to sort of. Make sure that boards and commissions. Your function as a part of the town as opposed to any other bodies. And the handbook's just sort of the thing that brings it all together. So I think maybe we can talk about, you know, how we have already the last couple of years tried to make sure that. Um, the relationship between boards and commissions and the town is um. Local parent. And there's some history for.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so let's move on. Um. Okay, so the potential priority areas that I heard from our conversations. Um. I don't know how we'll end up framing this, but in my mind. There's a slight difference between the top three and the bottom. The first one is about internal alignment, efficiency and governance. There's a lot of thoughts you might have on on this topic. Um, financial stability, again, like a very weighty topic that's on your minds. I think there's a lot of opportunity to think through how. To address it and what some of your goals are there. There were, you had a lot of thoughts on communication and engagement. Um. And I think when we have this conversation, I want us to pay attention to. Like what is the policy direction needed from you all versus what is the implementation of how things are done, which would happen more at the select board office level? And so maybe there's insights they need and opinions from you all on how to do that. Um, but then they would go and figure it out. Um, and then we actually, so all of you named housing, infrastructure. And climate change as like other topic areas that are in, um. We didn't flush them out as thoroughly as those top three in our conversations, and I think that's. I think that's okay. And maybe that's because it's a little more, well, it it's more work that actually happens in some of the departments. And so they might have a lot more to flush it out. Um, than you all did in our calls, or maybe we just didn't have time for those.
Well, I would say the other issue is that without being able to master the top three, you can't really effectively. Address the bottom three. For instance, we don't have financial stability, we can't really invest in housing, infrastructure, and that and climate change.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so they are certainly priority areas, but at the same time. They tend to be. Uh, they're addressed more effectively when we have our financial situation in order, yeah.
And I think it's also very possible that maybe those three are really a focus of this point in their roadmap and. Um, maybe in the next one, you'll, there will be more content on some of the bottom three here because you're able, you're in a position to do that, hopefully.
Which is not to say that we don't engage in efforts and housing, infrastructure, investment, climate change, that we certainly do. Um, and that actually ties back to an earlier page you had about. That we're not always innovative. I'm not sure I agree with that. We've had various pilots, some more successful than others, but for instance, there was. The scooter pilot, neither did particularly like it very much, but that was an innovation. We tried it and. Uh, I think we're we're very well to try various initiatives.
Yeah.
So as I look at this list, and I'd be really curious about what staff thinks.
And we're gonna go a lot into.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess. My, um, I see the bottom half of the list as things that we should spend more time on, which is really gonna affect what staff does versus the top. Um, that, I mean, financial stability, of course, is really important, but you know, giving some direction on. How to move an eagle on some of these other things and what this like these priorities are, is what is going to create a longer term planning. And the planning and guidance for staff and departments. Um, the other stuff. Seems like tech should have said.
Let's, let's bring it down and see if you still think.
Financial stability. Um, I think we have to be careful using that word. Um, you know. Financial instability is baked into our state statute constitution to enhance attention. We're supposed to be in state. Um, but you know, compared to the crime to, I mean, I'll kick on. But it's kind of, uh, but you know, X towns. Um, you know, that is, uh, like going through incredible financial stresses. And we have the ability to weather. You know, that instability that many towns don't. So I I I'm sorry, I just think we'd be careful how we phrase that. So we're not suggesting that. You know, we are as bad off as, you know, X town and. You know, undertake whatever.
And Bernard, just to add on to that, I'm not even sure. Saying. That we're unstable is an accurate way to say that. I think we're very stable. We we're very predictable about what we have. We just wanna be, we wanna do more than what we have. The resources, but I think our current finances are very predictable.
Yeah.
So what if we, can we go into this? And then I I think. Really the word changes, that's great and easy to do. Yeah, is that okay, Michael?
Yeah, 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 that's fine, I.
Just on that point, it could be that we call it fiscal health, but I think the point is. Uh, yes, we're not in some kind of disastrous financial quagmire at the moment. So we get through and we do better than most. But by the same token, if we don't have a mechanism to predictably generate revenue at a high level, we're seeing you to rely. On overrides. So it's when it come a point where the residents are going to say no, and then we will have, you know, a real problem on our hands. So regardless of what we call it exactly, I think the the larger point. Is if we don't identify ways to fund. How we want to achieve our priorities and housing, infrastructure, investment and climate change, that we're gonna read more like wishless.
I think, I I think part of the challenge here is that there's actually two factors here that were rolled into one thing. The first is excellent financial management. Yeah, but we can just go there. We're down that rabbit hole. Um, one is excellent financial management, which I think we all feel very confident about, you know. And this is not necessarily something that we need to provide strong guidance. Open details. Notwithstanding, um. Um, but to David's point. The and to Bernard's point about instability is that. The select board does have it as its priority. To, uh. Lead on ways to manage the physical challenges that face the town. You know, structural deficit, rising costs.
And I I appreciate you helping us all. Like again, thinking of like what is in your perfume here versus what is outside of it. And so I just, just to reflect. I think there are four, kind of, maybe these are goals, objectives, we can get to that later, but um that I heard. So one is. To try to increase communication about what's happening. Um, and partly this is so like whatever you decide you need to do to find. A more healthy physical place. Um, the town is ready and they're not surprised. Um. So I think that was a key, and I heard. Then there might be a task of actively cutting projects and services that are not prioritizing. Um. I'm not sure exactly what we would do with that in this roadmap necessarily, unless you do get to the point where you need to be doing that. And if so, you would want to articulate which. Um, then there was an idea around um trying to increase the net new revenue. By encouraging staff to the more proactive role and seeking out development opportunities. Um, so that would be a guidance from you to staff to like really try to prioritize this activity. Um, and then to again, like proactively explore, I think that's the theme, some using non-profit institutional assets in the town. So I think that was all of the like, yeah, concrete financial health, fiscal health. Um, but I also wanna see if anyone from the Slidward office wants to chime in here. Um. And share and if they're going to make you think the select board would be helpful for them to be considering this conversation.
I think. This conversation has been, I think everyone is on the same page here, all have written that. Um. You know, I I also want us to think. We're we're facing significant financial difficulties in the next five years. Um, you know, some of those are structural deficits, some of them are are more intense. So. I also don't want to cite the fact. That this is one part of our plan and we're not just intermanager training, like not, um. We're continuing to provide vital services to the community. At the level that we can, while also being responsive to community needs. Um. And if that means shifting priorities and shifting money around, that's what we do. Um. I don't want us to be in a situation where people feel like we are, um. You know, to interfere with failing, to take this seriously, because the highest of the financial constraints, it just needs the jobs a lot harder. It doesn't need to be. Uh, step away.
In chess, do you, in in some of those hard. Decisions that might face the town in the next five years, is there any? Like guidance or action or direction from the select board that would be helpful?
I think that's gonna come as part of. As as part of the iterative processes that we've done before, but it's really kind of a. I I would I would almost rather frame it positively rather than negative. I'd rather say the select worst priorities are this and that, and provides us with. Sort of the mirror image of that, which is okay, if it's not on this list, then there's a potential for it to be reduced or refocused or put to. Is select work plan. Um. So.
I would propose. In this, in the spirit of guidance. That the the bottom two items there, you know, are specific examples of. Uh. Opportunities for increasing revenue. Um, and I don't know at what level the select board. As a body versus like the in uh efforts of individuals like words should be tackling that sort of danger if she would like. Um. Yeah.
But could a direction, could a roadmap? Direction really to staff be to like. Prioritize increasing revenue for the town. And maybe, maybe it's not the exact specifics here, because the maybe there's implementation considerations that.
Right, or there may be other offer. I would, I wouldn't wanna foreclose on other opportunities. To increase revenue because they didn't put that couple of categories that you need.
Chad.
I will say, so here's, here's a. Concrete scenario that has come up and has led to confusion, frustration. On staff to the other, and I don't receive for them, but I do some whole time. Yeah, I'm lying, but something that I noticed, for example, um. Talking about Tactic Harry, um, Tactic Harry neighborhood and some of the zoning processes that they've gone along there now for some time. And that creates the M D C communities act discussion. Um, and it sprung out of a period of time when. Town meeting was less. Focused on housing and development and more focused on conservation and preservation. Um. But as that has shifted and town meetings views have diversified, I don't think town meeting is now, I think can be a distinction of one voice. There are definitely competing voices out of town meeting about the balance between preservation and development. Um. The planning department has spent. Years trying to develop this form based zoning protection parity that allows the neighborhood. Input into what it wants itself to look like. It's been trying to use that as a mile for near the self determination and. While also allowing for. Reasonable meaningful development in those areas. So they've gone out to Tactic Harry, they've had all those mediums there. They've talked with the people who live there and said. Want, because we don't want flat roofs, we want this and that, we want the ability to add units to structures without compromising what it looks like. Um, and that development has gone on. And when. They check in with people who have not been engaged with the process. It sometimes feels like the response that gets eaten inside of her. Why are you doing this? What's going on? Who told you to do this? Or, um. This isn't a prior, this is no longer a priority for us. We look at somebody else. Um, the stuff that happens on a long, especially stuff that happens in a long time horizon like that, is sometimes subject to. People forget that's going on, or people will feel like priorities have shifted. So I think practical feedback for us that is helpful is. Do you want us? You know. Find finding a balance between, um. Us regularly coming to you within these with these longer term projects and update you to give you a sense of that. Um. Without necessarily asking you to micro manage those projects, you can say, you don't, we don't want you to feel like you have to make all the decisions that are important. Um. Because the ultimate goal there, right, is developing the diversification of the town, or the increased tax base, the ability to. Uh, but also the, you know, the the needs of the neighborhood, the needs of the. Growing neighborhood that has to meet certain states requirements. Um, and. And so I guess what I'm asking there is that, um, when you have these, you know, increasing net new revenue and practically explored these things, um. I I want. Something. That would provide a level of certainty to staff as they go that. They're not gonna get run pulled out from under them, that there will be support from. The board, uh, provided that the workers don't in the direction the board wants to develop. Um, and so if that means updating you more frequently on those things and then. Getting your feedback, um, but also down the flip side of that, when there is pressure from the outside, from people who have not been involved in it to say. Don't do this, do something else. But the board is then conversant and able to speak back to that and say, no. We know what's going on. This is a priority for us and we want it to happen, it's continuing. That's the kind of balance that I hope you might strike there with these longer term goals. Does that make sense?
Yes, it might be, I wonder if it'd be helpful to, as part of this process. To look at what is in flight, but to confirm, so you can have that guidance. So I don't, Chestnut Hill West is an example. There's, you know, there's lots of planning around roadways and. Plate streets and, you know. Uh, hardware improvements around uh safety, things like that. It might be helpful. To review and confirm for folks so you have that certainty to to staff, push staff to it.
Yeah.
Um, very corporate feedback.
Yeah. I think the other thing that would be helpful to that, and I agree with you that that sort of getting an understanding of like what is in flight would be very helpful, is to also understand. From whence these initiatives were came, you know. Was there a roadmap five years ago that that had a different focus, you know, and is that shift gonna like. Upend a whole bunch of work that's been going on? Because, you know, to your point about stability. Or we don't necessarily, we we wanna keep that in consideration as well.
I mean, and one more point, the the complexity or the opportunity is that, you know, some of these um initiatives come from town. Right, right, it comes through resolutions, um, or often a resolution. Uh, or something that comes out as a negotiation. And that that results in, you know, decisions that made at town meeting can sometimes have a long. Planning horizon, right? You just can't turn around and keep. Um, and and town meeting. Um, depending on the makeup of the common select board, because things can change over time, uh, that could also influence some of the. So I do think a regular. Review and confirmation would give staff the confidence to. Nissai, make adjustments.
Yeah, and we have, flip side of that, for example, is the discussion we had in Lincoln's, right?
Of what?
Lincoln's, uh, which I think, oh, Lincoln's, you know. Even though the ultimate decision that the select board made was, okay, we've done the analysis and we don't wanna move forward with this, I think. That was a fair and clear transitionary process, right? We came back to be, we did the work, you know, staff made the analysis, hired a consultant. Hished the benefits and drawbacks, talked to the board, and they made a decision, which was, we all think it's appropriate at this time for this community, and that's, that's the way it should be. So I'm not saying. You shouldn't pull plug on things that you don't think permanent immunity must have, it should, it's just a matter of ensuring that. Staff or community and 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 understand that's, you know, at at certain, at key points in the process, that that's a, you know, hospitality is that the board was saying. We've gone this far and we're not.
That really gets at the communication and process value that we have.
I was going to say in that context, I know we didn't end up uh supporting that proposal. I nevertheless really appreciated that proposal because it was an example. Of taking a proactive role to try to find a way to generate more revenues. And even if. We may not agree with every such proposal, I think we would definitely appreciate having more of those kinds of proposals. Because that will allow us to, in a meaningful way, try to generate more revenue. So I look at these third and fourth categories. As specific examples of how one can go about. Gen- uh generating new revenues, but it's not the uh end all be all, it doesn't have to be those two, but it's. Just exam, some concrete examples of what you could be doing. Uh, and I think we would very much appreciate that.
So let me, I'm going to try to sum up where I think we've landed with this conversation and then I think I'm going to kind of have this keep moving. Um, okay, so one is we're going to change the name. We don't like stability, but we'll think of something else, maybe fiscal health. Um. I think the.
By the way, it's stability or instability, um the terms.
Yeah. So we'll, and feel free to send, I am, I meant to say this at the beginning, you have my email and my signature is my phone number. I'm very open to rogue thoughts and um. I think the process of developing the roadmap. Will articulate what your priorities are, and so that will help inform any uh like. Challenging cutting decisions or so, so that will be helpful in terms of fiscal planning. Um. The communication piece remains important, and then I appreciate the point of like, and also with staff about where you are, so we can add that. Um, and then. Um, I think maybe it sounds like we're we're thinking about keeping the. Direction of looking for more proactive revenue, but not being so specific about what the methods are. Um, and then having a regular review of projects or like more awareness of some of that so you can. Um, know what's going on and speak to those goals and have a chance to adjust to. I think. We may, maybe we'll do that in this process and maybe it's a regular thing. I'm I'm sure. All right, can I take us back to? Okay, internal alignment, efficiency governance. Um, there are a few, I think what's in the boxes on the left are potential like higher goals. And then what's going to be on the right are potential ideas of. Like ways to do them for objectives. Um, so there's this idea of increasing awareness and collaboration across town government, which has already started to come up. In our conversations.
Um, could you explain what that means? I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I think these might, these might illustrate it. I think there's the idea that different departments don't necessarily know what each of them are doing. And then also you might not know what the departments are doing and kind of vice versa.
And adding boards and commissions. A real interest in.
Yeah, yeah, um.
I'm shocked that departments don't know what other departments are doing.
Yeah, and I think that, and I don't know how true, but I can't speak to if that is always the case or sometimes the case. I just heard from people. Um, sometimes it has not been the case and it would be helpful if it were. Um, so one idea was, would it be useful to compile all of the goals and objectives from all of the strategic plans that department have made? So you can try to look across them. That would be like a very big synthesis exercise. And you look through all of the strategic.
I'm not saying look through it all, but they're there.
The key ones have been pulled up. Um, so this was like the idea I think here was more detailed and whoever I. Can't remember who see, like who shared some of these ideas, if you want to speak to them, feel free. Um. The second one is try to increase coordination among the departments and maybe this is like. How you hire positions, someone that would support all of them and their business services or other things. Um, and then also just encouraging relationships between individuals. Um. Any initial.
Question I have to point for maybe, we already do the compiling goals and objectives. So all of our departments present to us on an annual basis, sometimes more than on a annual basis. Our commissions present to us and in all of those presentations, they will always have a slide. These are our goals. We met goals one, two, and three. We could have done better on four. So what if we're doing that?
Yeah. And and in my thought is is in the financial plan booklet.
Yeah, so we we do do that, but one of the things that I noticed is just part of going through the comp plan is that. Just remembering the role that boards and commissions play. Uh, so we're all rowing in the same in the same direction. And so, um, which sometimes we go in circles, but if you just take, I mean, there's a few key boards and commissions that have a significant impact. On future work, um, EDA. The planning board. The hat, the park and rec, all of these, um, they, while they're not staff, they certainly. Provide input in critical work. Um, as part of the the work that we do going forward. And I I think sometimes there is a disconnect between what maybe the boards and commissions are doing versus what staff is doing. And staff populates many boards and commissions, and I think they do their best to kind of. Move things forward, but their staff, you know, I just, I think there's an opportunity there to.
So maybe that.
In increase communication, collaboration. Coordination across. Commit boards and commissions, which I would approve.
Right, so maybe that's the more than the rather than internal.
I would say two things. Number one, I would add the transportation board to. Right, and and and, you know, just the, just the fact that, you know, the five or six, whatever, there's probably seven or eight more. Um, that we should be thinking about. And, you know, I think the select were handled actually in understanding like the difference between advisory committees. Advisory public bodies versus. Other other regulatory public bodies, you know, that that kind of distinction and being able to uh. Have a common understanding of that distinction would be helpful. Um, so that was point number one. Um, and point number two is that, I mean, the impression I actually get amongst certainly the department heads that I've talked to since I've. Come on board is that their collegial relationship and chess room is actually. Very good, very healthy on, you know, and they they talk to each other. So I don't think that that focusing on the individual relationship of the leadership and the part of it is a particular challenge in these cases.
Okay, let me keep going. Okay, like we, if if some of these we want to get more into, we also have time, we don't need to do it all today. Um. Okay. There was a idea we heard around prioritizing modernization and efficiency in the government. I think there have been. Uh, efforts that have been made here, but the idea that this can still use some help um was shared. And this was both around like, could some of the work be made online or digitized? And then also in this, we've started to talk about so someone, a few people were sharing that there are a lot of. Large planning efforts that have happened that have cost huge amounts of money. And there's not always the task of going back and saying like, was that worth it? Like, did we get somewhere with this huge expenditure? Um, and so I don't find nowhere that's going to sit. I put that around like efficiency, um, but. It might require some more conversation. Let me just do the next one and then.
I think that's more challenging.
Yeah, um. So the next one is improving communication and engagement with town meeting. Um, so one is this idea of. Potential action that could be taken is, um. Right now, I understand that each of you gets paired with some warrant articles to review and edit. Before town meeting, is that correct?
Record and we are each assigned roughly an even number of warrant articles. There's a pre-draft that usually Melissa writes them. And then we revise them accordingly for the uh all of them are such a thing.
And so I think what I've heard, so like this is what's happening now, um. I think some people feel like that's working and a lot of people are feeling like. There could be more active engagement from either like commissions or town body, maybe it's like the financial team. I'm sorry, I don't know the names of the right commissions.
Advising.
I get I maybe, um. And also from you all. So basically, the 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 goal I think that I understand is. To have to not uh to have warrant articles that are brought to town meeting. Like the have an understanding of what the town's financial capabilities are of efforts that are happening elsewhere in the town and like what's. What are the current.
I think we do do some of that already, and we've hired the committee. This is the town's finance committee that advises on meeting basically. Um, does include in their that relations, the costs to be a town. Or at least they asked the question. Um, may maybe what you're talking about is, you know, that board needs to be more. Yeah, more active when um for our first come to us in the warrant. Uh, and we, you know, review that within our meetings and 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 otherwise. Uh, be more active in terms of. Um. Trying to make them. More coherent, um, more respectful of, you know, the limitations of town government. Um, I think that's what you get.
Well, we we can't control the legislature. The legislature is what the legislature is going to do. And ten signatures, a large should bring a warrant article. Um, and I would, I would caution us and and. Other than making our avail ourselves, make ourselves available. To advise and provide input, which, you know, minutes of minutes, that's available, yeah. Uh, we wouldn't want to be perceived as trying to limit. And that will will prevent. The legislature.
No, I I I agree with that part, but I think the issue that uh comes up often is more around amendments to warrant articles that are. Last minute and often the criticism that we'll hear is that uh there is sort of tremendous pushback. By select board and advisory committees saying, we're coming in at the eleventh hour, you should have been involved earlier in the process when you're doing. And that's often a persuasive argument, and so the amendments typically fail. But the frustration from the author of the amendment's vantage points and perhaps the. Uh, demographic will intend meeting that would have otherwise supported the amendment or continues to support the amendment. Is that if they had been armed with the information earlier on, there may have been an opportunity from or their dialogue. That would have obviated the need for that amendment to be filed first place. And so I think uh. What we could try to do is just facilitate the sharing of information in real time with town meetings so that. So an example, this this might be more work for town staffs. I'm not sure how you feel about this. But maybe an interim budget summit at the six month mark, so that town meeting members are aware, here's what we're working on. This is uh why we're going to be taking uh approaches X, Y, Z at town meeting. And that way, town meetings had their opportunity at least six months in advance. They know it's coming. And if they want to propose a modification, they can do it at that point. There can be further dialogue rather than it's very.
I think, you know, we we do that now in terms of forecasts, but that's that's the, that's the, and that's, you know, we've actually done better now. After when you do the forecast in December, we we invite the advisory committee, where you can just do that, um, we do the um. Presentation of the financial plan, invite the advisory committee, you want, we can obviously um. Promote those better and you have, you know, let town meetings officially know. Uh. You know, I will say, it's as Paul said too, right? Like, there's also, there's there's procedural games for sure. Right, like the the someone filed the budget amendment on the last day to modify the school budget and withdrew it. And trying to move it again, went after the combined reports deadline had passed, so that you couldn't publish the report back. Uh, they literally tried to sneak it by you so that the town meeting would not have. A recommenda- a written recommendation from the select board outing and thankfully admire it and shut that down. Um, but like that's, you know. On the one hand, absolutely happy to make sure that if people need additional, you know, visibility to this, that they have. On the other hand, like. I'm 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 not sympathetic to people who play games. Uh, so I think we have to just, you know. Keep an eye on what those what those are. In inevitably, there will be that type of gamesmanship, yes.
But to the extent that town meeting can be very clearly invited to those advisory committee forecast meetings. And maybe reminded maybe five times, so at least we don't get that argument on the eve of town meeting. We didn't know about this. We weren't included.
Yeah, but but I think that that we also have to make sure that they understand what that forecast meeting is. You know, why why are we having what role it plays and and what process, but I don't think most people had a clue, really. But let me just say one, I was gonna, so, um, you know, the what's on the right there is increased active involvement of more. Article draft, and so you're really talking about before it gets to the law. You know, and and I think they've done a. Decent job of they're engaging with people writing articles, make that, make sure that they are. Talking to the departments to see if there's a need for the article, uh as well as, you know, how to. To um to write it so that 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 it makes sense. Maybe that's where. We need to spend more time focusing on.
Who, what's the fun example with someone's to?
So I I just think we we spend a lot of time in advance of the warrant even opening. Betting warrant articles in our proposals. It it's a lot of staff time and a lot of times. Parties are kind of put in, you know, a a research and back finding effort in order to either improve or kind of. You know, make make a shift in in the direction that a warrant article might be going. Um, and then when it gets filed, I think, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of reliance on the advisory committee to try and help with that effort. Um, but sometimes, you know, as an example, I'm thinking about like the the disability article that was. Files and the the compromise that kind of emerged at the end of the process, but with not enough time for it to town meeting to really kind of digest that proposal. Um, and maybe those those efforts could have, you maybe had happened earlier, maybe the outcome would have been different.
Well, sorry. I I you can say you don't want to be put on the spot. Do you have ideas of, is it like? It is, okay, so let me try to frame this up. I understand that there's like, there's a lot of rightful sensitivity and not wanting to mess with the legislative branch of the government, like that is not your fault. I hear that. I think the interest that I heard in some of these conversations is. What can we do to perhaps? Improve the process so that there is input of like what's happening at the town level more reflected in those articles? And so I think that's to your part, Bernard, and I'm wondering, I mean, like this example seems like it was a timing challenge.
Well, a compromise, I mean, that's a more active approach in trying to provide a compromise that would be workable for both. Town staff and, you know, the the politicians.
I will, I'll put in a plug for staff there for a moment, so, um. Articles are filed. If we direct staff, I mean, first, our staff does way more than other towns do. With respect to helping uh town meeting members bring articles. Um, you could spend months and months and months, which I think you already do, on. Helping to vet, improve, research warrant articles as opposed to doing the stuff that the select board, the executive branch is actually directing you to do. So that's why I think we need to be careful. With trying to be too prescriptive to town meeting about what they should do and how they should do it. Um, a B fact tried to do that with a recommendation that there'd be some, each article had a financial analysis. I think an article actually. Came to town meeting and it was, it was voted down. Um, if it came, but I maybe it didn't make it to the floor. I just think we need to be careful. I think promoting. When planning is being done, when the financial summits are being done, making sure that that's um. You know, visible. I also would ask the advisory committee to make sure they're recommending that because they are the advisory committee to town meeting. Um, and they can also provide that type of information, but let's let's be careful. On placing too much of a burden on staff to try to make really horrible warrant articles that are poorly written. Um, you look better, um, you know, some some stuff just shouldn't. Sometimes it's not ready to be brought to town.
Yeah, but uh it's what we've done in the past. Say exactly how and where, um, but we put out um some guidance, I think the larger committee put out a guidance as to. You know, if you're interested in putting together a writing article at town meeting. Here's what you need to do. First of all. Talk to uh departments and make sure that what you want to uh do is not already being done or can be done. Uh, you know, just by uh decision of the department. Um. So I mean, you know, the guid- guidance to people who, you know, really don't many times uh write articles and don't really understand the process. Or understand, you know, the um context within which, you know, their article is going to be.
Maybe finding that resurfacing it, communicating.
Yeah.
But I I want to keep this moving and then I I like ideally would give you a five minute break.
Yes.
So so at least let's move out this section, bro. Um.
Yeah, you promised ten minutes.
Okay, let's do it. This is up to you. Um, okay, so there was. This general idea of making committees and boards more efficient and effective. I'll just, I like, people see progress on this and I think there's just a little appetite for more. There are some specific ideas that like maybe you do actually have too many and some of them should be combined. This one thing I heard, um. That like maybe you do, do you actually have too many and some of them should be combined, this one thing I heard, um. Maybe there's more review of policies that are being put forward by the boards and commissions that's needed. Um maybe there's like an evaluation process to see what they're doing. Um and then the last piece I'll just note is the idea around improving collaboration coordination with the school committee, um. I talked to a few people about the town school partnership and if there are ways to try to make that maybe a more effective bridge or to use them more. So any kind of first comments on this, again, we we don't need to resolve these things today, but how do those.
In terms of the first one, I would just focus on what Tiffany has already done in terms of the uh book. Boards and missions book with, I mean, that answers all of those questions. Maybe people should read it.
Yeah.
Again.
Hey, I agree with you, but I also think that it may be that enhanced that over time, that that handbook. To take into account new issues as they come up and um and having a bigger sample for consideration of that. But to me, would just be the.
But I mean, yeah, the boards and commissions know about, you know, what we expect from them. And and they respond, you know, with with their reports. Um and many of their reports are very, very important, in terms of understanding what they're doing and. Value, that's all.
Oh, there's any comments? Now I've enticed you with your ten minute break. Yeah, we can do, why don't we do that, and then if anything comes up on this topic, we can return to it, okay, so it's eleven oh four, eleven fourteen. We'll be back, okay.
Hey Melissa?
Yeah.
Do you need to turn on the all? Okay. Continue.
All right. Um. Okay, so we have now talked through the internal alignment, efficiency governance and financial stability. So the, the next one is going to be on communication engagement. This also had a good amount of thoughts.
Go back to where we were when.
Sure, yeah.
Um, and physical collaboration, coordination with school committee. Um, I'm not sure what to say about that. I remember like first came on town meeting in two thousand and six. I've always hear from the school committee. We're a separate body, you don't have anything to say about what we do. And it's always been frustrating. Um, it's that we really need to think of how we have a good relationship with school committee. Um, because we give them the money. And um. Yeah, it's not that we, we need to. Insert, insert controls. But you know, there has to be a better relationship than if we had not. It's improving. Uh, under crisis, you know, because of the crisis that we've had over the last year or so. But um. Yeah, that's an important thing to consider.
So let's.
Trying to say that.
They forced you into a break. So let's keep it here. Uh, maybe it's through the town school partnership. Maybe there's other ways to work on and improve that relationship and cooperation. Okay.
In terms of the development admission bylaws, do comparable communities or other communities in general? Do that to actually have a bylaw about it, or is it more a memorandum of evidence?
I'm not sure, and I can't remember whose idea this.
Well, it's more, it's more incidentally, uh, because you can't, you can't bind the school committee, but you can. You know, this is before kind of being talked about in this administration documents yesterday, really is important to have. Documents that are mutually enforceable by both sides. So we have a school committee and select board agree. And then after that, they governs it, and then they can each go to the other and say, see, this will be, um, so less the bylaw or. The binding. Piece of, yeah, binding agreement. Usually, you know, and we've been saying this, something that this is really tactical partnerships. Because you don't want. One side of the other to be the latter of the alternative, so the way to help hold a balance, just partnership whereby you go one by can override another one. Um, you could at least have. The, you need, you need a warlords plus one, you know, plus two, you know. Um, so.
But as we know, time meeting.
That is correct, time meeting ultimately decides. And so, I think that's, that goes back to the issue that David put out, which is that if people trust the process, people feel the process is fair. They're less likely to go off in the process of campaign.
Can I go back to schools?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I guess what I'm trying to get a handle on is how do we? Develop the relationship that's. Useful. For us. Oh, no, we're going, trying to get at these. The thing that is so opaque is how we come up with their budget. And, you know, uh, the school community has always been very hesitant to. Engage town meeting or anyone else in that process. At least that's my instinct, it's my experience. How, I mean, is there a way that we can, or make their budget building? More transparent to us and to the town meeting, so that there's a, so that there's a basis for a relationship with the, uh, you know, between us. Does that make sense as a former chair of school committee?
It does. I think there are two issues. So I would say that most school committee members are equally frustrated by. Uh, the lack of transparency, the budget being able to easily estimate it. Uh, there.
In your, in the food, but.
Correct, practically. There is new leadership in place, and so hopefully that's going to, uh. Be a smooth transition and there will be that additional transparency. But I remember when I was on the school committee, frankly, I was, I was very frustrated too. So I don't think necessarily we need to be blaming school committee members. Um, and there's also a mutual understanding part of this. That I'm not sure select board fully understands that this full budget, you can't have it down to the exact dollar, unfortunately, because of that special education component. That's a floating number and you, you can have a pretty good estimate, but it's not going to be the opinion because you don't. Know your student population is necessarily going to be from one year to the next. You don't know how it feels when it change. You don't necessarily know who's going to move into and out of district placement if you won't. So there's always going to be some variability in that component. But as to the rest of the budget, I, I certainly agree with you. We ought to have better transparency so you know.
I would add a couple of things only. Um, from the vantage point of sitting in on. A few of the meetings where they discussed like budget. Well, this was obviously just in the last year with the, the challenges that they were imposing. The budget. Gap. Lose the right to. Um. Uh, and to David's point, there was definitely, uh, sort of frustration amongst the school committee members. Um, I, I think part of the other challenge is that, and I think it's a political challenge, is that, you know, when the school. Committee and the school administration are focused on the educational needs. Um, and whether it's, you know, in special ed or in the, in the school, uh, programming that they, that the. Budgeting the administration provide. It's very hard for both the school committee and us to say, we actually need. To have the administrative and financial capacity in place in order to provide all the information and do all the analysis. So for example. When they made the decision to cut a data person from their budget, which, you know, was something that they ultimately wanted. Under the political pressure of maintaining specific services, um, you know, that's. You know, it makes sense why they did that and it, but it also makes sense that if there was some way that we could have a relationship with them to help provide. Or coordinate those kinds of in. Uh, administrative and finance services or other sort of basic infrastructure. I mean, I assume that that is an area of opportunity for the town school partnership. That, that we should be lifting up and promoting and support. So if there were guidance from this, that's where it would be, yeah.
I just wanted to share one. Example, so I'm working, I think I shared with a few of them, I'm working with a school committee, actually on a very similar effort in a different municipality in the state. And one thing that they. Thought would be quite useful is. Um, basically having the superintendent and maybe the school. Maybe chair or attend select board meetings and have like a standing time on the agenda to give an update and vice versa. That the, um, either the town administrator or the chair here or someone would have the task of going to the school committee to give an update on like what they're seeing across the town and they like. Just. Being more on each other's radar, they thought would be quite useful. And so this is just like the understanding, not, it doesn't address the budget conversation. But just knowing, having more awareness.
I don't think I would necessarily, certainly, and it's something that we've done in the context of building projects. So I'm not sure why we wouldn't do it. For broader municipal finances.
But I do think ultimately this is, this shouldn't be. Personality based or it should be. Procedural based, which is we need an agreement and all parties need to stick to the agreement, um, to guide it because that will be sustainable at the time.
All right. I think that's good to move on. Okay. Um. So, okay, communication engagement. I'm going to try to run through these quickly and pause. So. There was. Okay, and then my, just to remind us all. As we go through this. It would be helpful for everyone to think through like, what is in the realm of your guidance and jurisdiction here versus like, I think people really care about this topic and have some ideas around implementation, which again, you know, that's like the line we want to be mindful of. Uh. Okay, so the improving coordination and the navigability of, of the government, um, residents and. This was like, and I think some ideas around like how the website just functions, like if, and the idea that if you're a business, you should know all of the licenses that you're going to need to do, and that should be in one place. So you're not having to like go chasing things down. Um. And then also the idea of increased collaboration between departments that are maybe working with specific individuals or families, but they're like actually in separate. There was another one around. All right, improve the select board's ability to respond to residents or speak on behalf of the town. I think this came up as a weakness and I heard someone said the idea that in a different select board. Um, they heard there's like the assigned role of a secretary who might be the person who responds to emails that you're all. On, um, or we talked about like attending different meetings and like. Because you're not one mayor, you know, like you can't have someone go and speak at a regional meeting, but is there a way that you could? Assign someone to do that.
But to that point about secretary, so during my six years on school committee, we often heard this criticism. That, uh, people who are right to us were not receiving feedback. So what we eventually did is we set up a rotation, granted on twelve, maybe there are nine of them. Uh, and each week it was somebody else's duty to basically respond to emails that came in. Yeah, and then with all the next person said it, I said, you want to be.
So we had a similar system, right? The thing, uh, it sort of worked for a little while. And, um. My sure is not working, but. They didn't need to swallow away. But, you know, this system whereby someone was identified to respond to a complaint. Um, and then without, and then would, would, um. Would, would speak to the relevant department head. Um, and other board members who know that that person was speaking for the board and would, you know, send out the five separate responses to the. To the resident. So, and we, we, we set up the system, we just have to figure out how to make it work. And it's hard because everyone, some issues, uh, everyone wants to. They respond.
And they have a different effects.
Right, you're not the same person.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did that come up on the school committee? How did you handle that?
So if somebody had a particular interest area, then they might jump in. So it wasn't strictly. This is the person who's been assigned for this week or answers will be everything, but the person assigned for that week sort of knew, all right, this is a special education topic and. Committee member X is sort of our go-to person for special education, so I'm going to forward this email. For that person to address. So there was some of that, but the main reason school committee developed this policy was. It was at a time when there was a really high volume of emails. It was literal triple digits every single day. And so people were getting very upset. No one's responding to me. So that's why we did that. And at times it got overwhelming for whoever was assigned to that particular week. The response might be a one-liner. Thank you for your input. We'll get back to you. But even that, uh, apparently the general public appreciated getting something. In response.
And I don't think we really have a problem with, uh, select board members having difference. Differences of opinion on equal subjects because the response is not, my opinion is, but the response is here is what we're doing, but and you will have someone get back to you. Um, and for look into the problem that you mentioned.
I'm not aware currently, maybe others are getting, um, more emails than I am. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be totally out of control in terms of the volume of emails you receive. And, uh, it's an issue. And also people sometimes will reach out to individual members depending on what they think of Warren or Baileywick.
Yeah.
And so I don't know that we necessarily would want to impose some kind of system at this point, right? As if we should, some kind of process.
Quite, it's not that triple digits today or even double digits, yeah.
But, but, you know, when emails go to the select board office. I mean, that's when we're talking about assigning someone to do it. Based on their interest or based on. Um. Well, mainly based on their interest.
Yeah. I'm not sure we would want to divide up. A matrix of interests in the teeth of, yeah, it's sort of been a lot in one way.
Well, no, yeah, loosely interested, I mean, yeah.
Well, and we don't need to figure these, this level of detail out. It seems like. Um, this is a rising to the.
My point is that we have a system already in place.
Revisit.
And we need to revisit it.
And also I think informally, we're already doing that. So a concrete example. I got something just some hell west related, I said that belongs to you.
Right.
And so I think internally, we already know that.
Okay, good. Okay. Um, let's see, I put these both up. So there was interest in. Improving dissemination of information and engagement. And I think there were some comments like, you know, different departments do this. Do communication engagement at differing levels and should there be some standards perhaps across departments? Um, there was an idea around hosting like meet and greets and Q and A with town staff out like in advance of town meeting and before this was part of that building trust between residents and like town government. Um, and then the last thing is around improving enforcement of policies. And this, we heard some ideas around like really trying not to bend rules for people that are very loud about not liking that they're breaking the rule. And then also the idea that, um, you, there are a lot of places in the town. And so like, can you use them to really? Um. Can you follow them basically, since I have massive, yeah.
Um, I would add in the improved townwide dissemination of information and engagement category is that. You really need a continuous process for bringing people. Uh, and bringing people, giving people the opportunity to engage. Um, and that, that process itself needs continuous improvement. You know, just because. You know. The. For example, you know, bringing people on to votes and commissions, letting people know that there's plans that are in town, you know, um. When somebody, when somebody moves to town, like what are all the things that they might want to do? They might want to, you know, sign up for alert book line. They might want to sign up for smart nine-one-one. They might want to. Uh, look into the office of housing stability if they need those services. And I want an electrified book line, you know, that's what it's it. And that's sort of the continuous need. It's not driven by any particular event.
So, uh, one suggestion to add here is to take a select meeting in a way. So, you know, once or twice a year, host it out at Putterhead, uh, at the Putterhead Library. Um, so that people can come, they're typically made up and to, uh, just like what meeting. Um, gets us out into the, into the community, um, and possibly in addition to that, extend. The amount of time that we have for listening. Um, Q and A almost as opposed to just public comment where we check that we don't respond, but. Have more, that, an opportunity to actually engage with people. So we go up and it's a listening session and maybe we give, we answer questions as best we can and if they're. Um, I've, I've heard that access to the select would be a good issue.
I think it's a very good idea. And on the school committee side, uh, school committee would actually do that. So there would be school committee members who show up to PTO meetings, for instance. There would be designated Q and A sessions at, uh, each of the elementary schools and high school. There would be remote meetings that were sometimes by grade span for parents to come and participate. Uh, I think school committee did an excellent job in that regard. We don't really do very much of that at all.
Thanks.
In the Zoom era, it was pretty easy to. Uh, get people to engage with the select board. The issue seemed to me is that we don't have a period of time. When people can ask questions and we respond. And during a public comment, you don't respond.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for a variety of reasons, but it was really set aside. Um, I think the school committee calls it, uh, open office, or someone calls it open office. Um, something like that gives, it gives the community enough incentive to, to interact or engage with us and raise questions and we would. And give whatever answers.
School committee usually call it listening sessions. So it would go out into school buildings, into BHA, uh, properties as well. Uh, sometimes it would be posted as an official meeting, so the whole school committee could go or form. Other times it would be just one person short. On the select board, that's a little more challenging. It wouldn't be, it couldn't be more than two of us at a time. But if we're worried about having too many official meetings, we could do the two-person per community day.
Great. All right, let's see. Oh, yeah. And then there were. Two other specific ideas, um, maybe more marketing of the town to, like, about potential residents and to go back to the demographic challenge. But conversations we were having at the top, like, are there ways to be more active, um, in some marketing? And then also this, like, the, the idea of broadening the pool of residents that are engaged in this situation. And I think some of the things you just mentioned would. Get at that.
I mean. In our role of providing guidance, staff, thinking about it in that way, um. Our, 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 our sort of the higher level objectives, you know, communicating the importance of higher level objectives and then looking to the staff for mechanisms for implementation. Like, for example, you know, we had lots of ways of different going up. Into the community, but you know, there are open meeting law concerns, there are timelinesses. Of, and accuracy of responses concerns, you know, and, you know, we would. I presume we would need policies and practices in place that we're able to do those, which is.
Right. So you would write the, I think the order of operations is you would give the. Guidance or request like, hey, we want to do this type of more active engagement or like, like, how would we do this? And then they would give you that.
Right.
Okay, let's, let's keep moving. I want to, I think the next conversation we can actually kind of have is one. So. This is on housing, infrastructure and climate. So let me just quickly run through each of these. These are a lot shorter. Um. So housing, I heard. I would say, again, like, there are less specifics here. Okay, um. One idea around housing was just, like, I know this isn't important to a lot of people. And the idea specifically of increasing preserving workforce in the composite was definitely a priority. There was one specific idea shared, but again, I think this is where like staff would probably try to more fully populate. So that. Um, for infrastructure, there is an interest in. Trying to understand the needs of infrastructure over a longer period of time. So you can be a little more proactive and build a plan for things. And so I think someone gave the example of like. Grids and ever source work. It's like, do you, you, they come to you and they need approval to do X project, but do you know what their longer term plan is to solidify your grid and how can you be a little more proactive than understanding it? I'll just say like climate preparedness for town infrastructure and definitely complete streets came up. As topics that no one, we didn't like get too into those. And I think we might need to have some additional conversations really to try to understand what guidance would be, but I know that those are on purpose lines. Um, and then lastly around climate change, someone said it would be helpful to understand, like. You have some big policy ideas on climate and goals. Are you on track to meet them? Is it possible to meet them? And maybe understanding that would help you give more specific policy guidance on climate. Um, and then I just heard a few people mention the, that maybe guidance would be helpful to know. Um, how much you think the town should bear some of the climate. Work that's needed versus individuals and thinking about fossil fuel free as an example. So. I mean, we only have, like, maybe just like five to 10 minutes before we start to wrap up. I'm curious what people think about. These three content areas, housing, infrastructure, climate, like, are these the right ones? Do you have ideas on how we should start to press them together?
I mean, I think it's missing is services. Not sure. It seems like a big bucket. You mean town services? Yeah. The general services and what you'd be doing. We need to do more. Really focus. We've got the opposite housing stability. We've got, right, transportation that's missing, right? And having a call for. There's an opportunity to improve the connection between north and south port line. It's really, you know, it, it, I don't know if you were, last night it's many, but we had a lot of discussion about continuing to add density where transportation exists.
Right.
Um, where we have less green space. And if you follow that model, um, you're never going to have opportunities. Well, you know, even to be able to get to where the green space is nominally in South Port Line, not without getting a car. So we should be. Talk about transportation. Starting with the glass or something, or service service.
But. Couple of things. Number one, and we're also know that preservation is not anywhere in that, in that area, which. Which as a priority, you know, I think we are. This is my opinion now, I'm just speaking for myself. I think that, um, we are overbalanced in that, in that area. So. That's fine, but, but I recognize that across the town and in terms of town leadership, um, the fact that it's not there will. Uh, it will be. A legitimate concern and issue. So I'll raise that. And number two, in particular on housing, and again, this is. This is my opinion, and I know that the comprehensive plan is looking at this more broadly, but, um, I would not want us to get too. Prescriptive on the ideas and solutions and links to housing because. You know, all of the, all of the ways that you can produce housing have knock-on effects on other areas, like. Like the economics of a hundred percent affordable housing are tougher, obviously, than the economics of market-based housing for development. And so how do we balance those two? Those, those various pieces.
I want to go to chess and I just, one thing that's coming up for me in this conversation is. Trying to separate out, like, some of these conversations are happening in the comprehensive planning process. And so I want us to be thoughtful about like what. Where is their guidance from you needed versus what's happening?
Also, you know, we've got the car, the car, there's, there's actually a residency plan is underway and that's going to be an important, right? Piece of planning that comes out of us. And we also have the, the, uh, community helping. Move.
Right, yeah.
Which has a big housing component in itself.
Mm-hmm. Right, Chad?
Um, I should write it. Something Paul said about the services more generally. I think. It's, I, it's not saying it needs to be addressed here, but it's something to keep in mind as we, as we move through this, particularly as the departments start getting involved. Um, there is. Departmental priorities are necessar, are necessarily going to differ in some ways from your priorities because of the basic services that they provide. So, you know, at the end of the day. These, everything that we're talking about is very important, strategically important, but a large amount of what we do on a day and day out basis is. They got trash or, you know, deal with rats or, you know, um. Um, provide transport, given senior center case, provide, you know, medical treatment where we can, you know, that's the. That's the bread and butter of what we do on a day and day out basis. And so I think it'll be interesting when you hear back from departments that. Their day-to-day priorities are ensuring that basic services take the pill. And so in the same way that, for example. We, we often talk about, oh, you know. Can you, can you do more? Can you do this? It's important to realize that much of our time is already taken up with. The basics of the governance and that in the time that we have left in the, that, that's the opportunity for us to think about. Expansion or revision or strategic thinking, but just in the same way that maybe more than eighty percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. You know, I wouldn't say, I would say. You know, seventy-five percent of our time is spent doing that, doing that work, doing the work of keeping things running. Um, and so we want to be. I particularly want to be mindful when we talk to department heads about this work that. We're not asking them to step away from the basics of the government. We're asking them to, um. It's, you know, strategically in addition to mindful of that, that there are. Processes that just have to happen every day.
And, and it, it might be helpful to have us all level seven, what those base fundamental services are that we're providing. Because, you know, I don't think we, I think we go through that. Throughout the year through separate conversations, but, um, having a good understanding of this is the base. This is the base, like, this is what we have to do. Um, and. This is the base, like this is what we have to do. Um, and then are there, what are the things that we'd like to add to that, which could be, how do you have. Transportation connections between north and south port line? Um, you know, other things that we may, that you know, it could mean trading off something else.
I like how Kara uh often brings it in terms of she gives like, here's what I'm working with. And if you wanna add something, tell me what is, what are the, what you want, you know, I I like the way she brings it because then it just shows. And and it's a way to check in to make sure she's still working on the right things, right?
I actually don't necessarily think we need our department's plans and goals to be in alignment. With ours, I mean, in a broad sense, of course, much of it aligned. What I mean by that is each department has its own purview. It has its own content matter expertise. And so I wouldn't expect. Uh, Parks and Rec, for instance, have some a goal that has to do with. Uh, so I I don't think that we necessarily want to be encouraging uh collaboration to the extreme. That each department is folded back on what their true goals are.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for collaboration between departments. I'm just asking for a fundamental standing from the board as to what the base services are. You know, Park and Rec. I I think right now they're they're no longer providing subsidized, right, access to programs, right?
We are, we are.
Oh, okay, but we, I'm using.
To some degree.
To some degree, but my, anyway, just, just like we said, it would be helpful to know what. Different departments are working on, but yeah, it's just being helpful to level set on what, what are the immovable services that we provide? Um, that are non-negotiable, unless we want, unless we wanna lower the quality of our service.
I certainly agree with you there. On my point, there's more response from earlier aside about collaboration between departments. Certainly want conversations taking place, but I worry that you can actually over collaborate to the point that departments no longer. Focusing on their subject matter expertise.
I think the example someone gave me was like, um, if you have. Uh, like housing goals in the public health department or I'm not exactly sure what that looks like.
Yeah.
Um, and then also in a housing and community development department, are those in line? Are they actually working? Away from each other, but yet not that every department should necessarily.
Right, I also think to to Paul's point, not just the select board knowing, but it also helps in our ability. If if we know what the base services are and that's really, they're really articulated to us. Then we have the opportunity to clearly articulate them to the town more broadly, which helps our communication and getting feedbacks.
Yep.
Right, and and we should be, we should be able to say, you know, we have our base level services, this whole issue of like, we have to pick up the trash. Right, as a, as a base level service, as a point of uh. Communication.
Yeah, as an example of that, um, you know, we have a base level service right now for this article. And we hear a lot of, you know, uh, interest in adding a ladder company to our self-work. That would come at significant cost.
Right.
Right, um, when, when and how that gets done, which should be a part of our discussion.
I think also helpful would be knowing not just uh what is the base level service that we provide and want to provide. But what is actually required of the federal, state law? Uh, because certainly trash pickup, of course, I wanna do it. I I know federal law is required. So just being able to know. Exactly what is an absolute core requirement and what is something that we definitely wanna do as a town. Uh, and just be able to have sort of an index.
I was starting to picture Melissa's example of the pie. So if you have a pie with showing the different big priorities or work each department has. Could you also show like where that requirement or guidance is coming from? So maybe some, right, maybe it would be a federal requirement, maybe it would be like a town, we have committed to trash picked up. So we're into it. And then maybe there's one of, this is from a, the town, this is from a, this is in bylaw that we have from six years ago and that's governing this part. This is coming from a select for some whatever. You can see where those priorities are.
Yes, I think that's helpful because sometimes people will say we should adopt zero-based budgeting. And for those who even informally want to look at our budget through that, at least it's helpful for them to see. Well, you might think you can cut A, but that's a federal requirement. So knowing what is governing, what does that do?
Yes. Okay. I I agree, and you know, five-year roadmap, that absolutely makes sense, but I also think that just having Melissa. So it's like a brave investment.
Yeah, and maybe the action is to do this and it doesn't need to happen in this development process. Like, like we, it could be an action for the next five years, not for the next six months or whatever.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um. I, let me just. Share where I think in some of the next steps that are coming in this, and then I think you could. Do like a crystal round and I'm curious like what's the big thing on your mind that either you wanna talk about? In this process or just something that's sticking to. Um, okay, so one thing that's gonna happen, I think you all are aware of this, we are in a funny. Ordering here that I think this afternoon you're gonna talk about this year's fiscal year's goals and objectives, which is going to feel really. I I I would imagine it would feel kind of confusing or funny, given that we're having this like. Bigger picture conversation. And I think ideally, when you go to make your budget goals. Annual, this will be your goals, you would refer back to your roadmap of like, these are our big five-year goals. How are we gonna do this this year? This is happening in reverse order because we don't yet have the goals for the roadmap. So just to name that might feel a little, um. I will try to make sense of the notes I took from this. Conversation and I'll try to update maybe this report and I'll send out some of the takeaways to you all. Um. And then I'm going to go and talk to the department and division heads. I'll work with the planning team on like what the list of questions. Will be and how to make sure that we're getting the most useful information. Um. I think I will talk with the select board office and the planning team about. When it makes sense for us to meet again, if in the fall workshop it makes sense, or if do we wait until December and try to do so more? Work. Um, before then. And then well, it'll just gonna be an iterative process. So we will probably talk through all of these things again, um, not. To reinvent the conversation, um, but to try to flesh things out when it's. Um, let me, do we wanna, can we do a go around just?
So I just question, are you getting much?
Yeah, this is extremely helpful. Yeah.
Um, so. One, I appreciate you doing this. You've done a great job. Um, I think. I'm going back to where we had the conversation about doing this. We have a worldly ocean strategy or strategy light. And this is kind of strategy light. I think the. One of the important factors for us as a whole is to have the continuity of engagement. So. You know, that on a regular basis, we revisit it, this is the living documents, um, we can follow up on it. We can check in on progress, but we take the time to actually think strategically together. Um, and we've been doing that, but having, we've been trying to facilitate ourselves. So I really appreciate the facilitator coming in and I hope that that will continue.
Yes, I think having uh actionable items so that this is a document that is very useful to us. Uh, is important and it sounds like you and all of us are committed to that as opposed to having a lengthy narrative. Uh, and then within priorities, I think perhaps. Getting uh a little more detailed or appropriate, so we know exactly how to take action on a priority. Uh, so for example, uh, my probably top priorities for revenue generation, so I said earlier. If we don't have sufficient revenue, we can't really do the end yet the rest of the time.
Yeah, I I agree. Um, what I think we need is. I agree, I think we need to be actionable, we use, excuse me. I'm pretty actionable. Um, goals for this five-year.
Mm-hmm.
Time span. But more importantly, what does the board plan get there? Uh, we use that word in similar, yeah. What do, what, what do we have to accomplish this year, next year, third year, so that in the fourth year we actually achieve? All the time. And 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 that requires a lot of just ongoing. And meeting and 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 evaluating, et cetera. But that's the only way you're gonna get to. Achieving your five-year goals. So figuring out how that happens and it's gonna be.
Mm-hmm. I just have one add-on if I may, from usual item here. So in terms of being able to. Understand power going to achieve certain benchmarks year by year, I think we also need to know what staff bandwidth is. So Chaz. Reference that there's about twenty-five percent available outside of day-to-day operations. So for us to maybe understand. Uh, the full list of what you're doing in that twenty-five percent, which is not questioning that we're doing that even better, but just for us to know. So that to Melissa's point, if there's something that we are prioritizing, for example, uh proactive revenue generation. What are we taking off the list to make sure that you're able to time to uh be able to dedicate yourself so each of our priorities are not sacrificing. What we consider core functions, yeah.
Um. Um, yeah, I'm very much on the same wavelength as um. David and Bernard in terms of actionable items. Um, I sometimes just like to refer to it as a to-do list. And I'm very serious, you know, and I think. We we should be able to reduce this to a to-do list for um twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seventy, eight, one, thirty. Um, and I think about um examples such as. We we have a tree canopy study that tells us that we're losing tree canopy. And that in order to maintain the tree canopy, we should be planting a certain number of trees um over time. Um, so the to-do list should include. How many, how many trees do we think we we need to come um in the next year? To stop the decline in our tree canopy? How many realistically will we be able to plant? Um, in the next year? Um, and if that is short of what we would have to do to maintain our tree canopy. Then what are we going to do to try to make up the difference? So that's just one example. Another example, um, which is very much in the news lately. You know, people are being caught um off-guard uh. Uh, in various parts of the country by the emergence of these flash floods all of a sudden. And and we're not immune. Um, and yet do, do we have a sense, we have a bit of info on. What is our current vulnerability to flash flooding? Excuse me, and um where are the areas of town that are the most valuable? And do we have a, you know, flood emergency notification plan um? That uh we could address with certain specifics. I was. I was just reading the latest article on this uh this morning. And it came down to by far the most effective warning turns out to be. Um, these loud uh sirens, you know, that would sound. Because you wouldn't have to deal with, yeah, but not everybody's looking at their phone and yeah, but it's the middle of the night, blah, 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 blah. I know that might sound kind of, you know, crazy to some folks. But do we even have any kind of a current system that the the towns on, that we can count on? To make sure that um we we really do have an effective emergency alert if there's a flood emergency, if there's a fire emergency. If there is a unnameable, you see. Um, but anyway, actionable items. Um. And then the other thing that's been very much on my mind, and I know there are numbers that have been more than heard from me before. Um, but I do think we've got to spend some time reviewing. Long-term initiatives that we have undertaken, which we are. Maybe increasingly seeing evidence that they are becoming less and less likely over time. Um, or at least they won't be what we thought they would be. And yet we're spending an awful lot of time in in the planning of them. Um, and and we're spending a lot of money investing in the planning of them. And the vital path is to me the obvious example. I haven't heard anybody explain what we think the vital path is gonna cost. Um, and without some kind of estimate of the cost, uh, and. I don't know how we can even begin to go ahead with spending further money on planning it. Um, and I haven't heard anyone give a plausible explanation of. How the um current changes that the MBTA is imposing on the Beacon Street border. Um, are going to limit our ability to achieve what we dreamed of conceive uh achieving. With this vital path of time. And yet, you know, millions have already been spent and uh. Uh, no budget yet that we can realistically look at and say, can we really afford that? Um, and and no explanation of how how can we even rely or can for this? When the MBTA has got all of these plans of their own for eating up space um that we were gonna use for the vital path.
Thanks, John. I just wanted to say that um you, like a few people, you especially, but some other people I think also mentioned the. All the money that's going into some of these bigger planning efforts and how to know if it's been announced. And so I think we didn't really talk about that today, but maybe let's make sure we can get that.
Yeah, so sorry if I went too long, but uh and I'm gonna throw on one more just, just because I think it's worth mentioning. Um. You know, I I think we could stand an update on uh the the Davis Path footbridge. Uh, project. And, you know, what our chances are of achieving funding for that, because if we're. Maybe we will achieve funding five years from now, ten years from now for that. I don't know, we haven't achieved it yet. Um, and if we're not gonna achieve it, what what alternative plan are we gonna offer to people? To improve access to the Boris Street playground for people who are, you know, in the, on the other side of the T tracks. Um, because there's certain things we can do, for one thing, to tell them how to get to the Boris Street playground from the opposite side of the T track, what the most convenient, so. You know, walking path is, um, are healthy to do.
Thanks, John, for sharing.
Um.
Swallow this out.
Sure, so um, the. The first thing that I that I'm thinking about is like, when we complete this plan. Um, and presumably it becomes available and transparent to the public, you know. Then are we gonna be in a position to be able to defend all of our choices in light of like all of the. You know, political concerns and the different things that people want that may or may not be reflected in that by us. So. I I think we need to, we need to be cognizant of that from the beginning. Um, to that point, um, I would prefer more frequent updates and engagement rather than less.
Yep.
Frequent updates and engagements so that uh we can, we can have this. Uh, in our minds as we're doing our other work. Um, to the point of all of the topics that you spoke of and the issue that you spoke of, David. Um, like knowing what what that, what that seventy-five percent is and what that twenty-five percent is. I think both of those things are really important. So getting, getting a well-maintained. Transparent, easily communicable, uh, uh, sense of what the town does as a baseline. Um, is a really valuable part of this picture. So it's been, you know, and some of that, you know, probably already exists and it's just a matter of. You're kidding, you know, you've talked about some things that have happened, obviously, before I joined the select board, including the planning for this. Um, to go back, um, that, you know, a lot of people just are unaware. Um, so I think that when the political uh ramifications. That our ability to communicate and our ability to understand the baseline will work with them, so we, we think that. Be interested in.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, everyone. This is, this is really helpful and I'm looking forward to try to. Continue meaning-making from this discussion and thinking through. Uh, definitely hearing the request for how to keep this more live. And so it's not like all of a sudden there's a final document and you're like, wait, did I agree for that? No. So I don't know if quarterly meetings the best way to do that, but we'll talk with the planning team.
Yeah, and there may be other mechanisms for.
Touch points there.
Any responses.
Yeah, we wanna make sure this is a then having process so that we don't get a report. File it in the file cabinet and forget about it.
That is in no one's interest. Yeah.
It may not be in anyone's interest, but it it it's it's a typically how things happen, I think.
Okay.
Well, I if I may just add, because I did hear you say, you know, maybe we'll meet again in the fall or maybe we'll meet again, you know, as early as December. My my understanding of this process is for it to be useful. Uh, we we have to, you know, be sort of clear by November at least. Um, at the, you know, at the latest, because this is meant to inform the budget-making process.
This is the second one, this is the one.
Huh?
The Saturday. This planning, so what's that called?
Judges. Yeah, I think there is a relationship between the twenty-thirty. Um, road map and our yearly budget processing, but it's more. Our goals, our objectives that that fits into that. Um. Which, you know, how those two fit together, I think.
Right. And that's what I was trying to think about here is, I think it's this year specifically gets awkward.
Yeah.
Because you have to have your budget goals for this next budget. Because you have to have your budget goals for this next budget year, but you won't have these goals and objectives ready by that point. So I think like the best that we could be for would be to, you know, keep what you've been talking about in your mind as and build forward into the goals. But it's not going to be completely reflective of it and that's just the time of this year. But the next year that this happens, it should be really easy to fully follow the 2020 process. Okay, and with that, I will let you enjoy that trick, the tricky tension there and do your fiscal year goals, but it's been nice to meet with you all in person.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you for that.
So good break for lunch?
Lunch.
We received a suggestion from Michael, uh Michael Rieckstein, and so uh this is partly a response to that and our ideas for how we can incorporate that suggestion, so. Chad or who would like to?
Um so, uh Michael suggested, right, during time meeting, I thought this was a big suggestion, maybe people look at a revision to this policy to make it clearer. Um but also to um call to attention the fact that we are approaching a period, a point at which we will be uh our pension. And then only about thirty, uh yeah, thirty, sorry, thirty two, okay, thirty two percent funded there. Um and so we have a longer uh road to go there. And so um we just wanted to make it clearer in the policy that when the pension obligation is satisfied, that the focus of that that money that was going to satisfy that outstanding pension obligation will be towards the OPEs. Uh while leaving the possibility that some of that money, we might want to, for example, dedicate towards our reserves. Um it's if we are to meet our, your um goal of us being at the median, at triple A, funded communities in terms of reserve balances. Um then increasing the reserve balance, so you're not going to contribute to the reserve balance in any cases through that some of that pension will be one way to do that. Um but we want to both provide clarity here for what the plan is after twenty thirty uh and put it in plain language so that um the policy uh is clearer to specific community that there's not a, there's not a windfall, there's not an operating windfall coming in twenty thirty when the settlement is satisfied, um that instead we have other liabilities and other things that you can call for once that should occur, so that we can um continue to be on sound financials. Uh Michael, do you have anything?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Chad and the rest of the staff for taking this up. I appreciated it and, you know, my, uh the one of the reasons why I took this on was sort of my own shift from thinking about the that excess as an opportunity for like all the possible things that we can do. Um and, you know, it is a sizable chunk of change um versus meeting, continuing to meet our obligations. So um I actually think that it is important that we, from this point, communicate uh our intent to continue to be financially prudent um in our in our policy here. Um, the other thing, the only other thing that I would say sort of in the details of the language is that Chad and I went back and forth at one point as to sort of how restrictive and how tight this should be. Um, and I think we've sort of reached a middle ground here. Um, on the one hand, there is uh, there was the argument that we should be uh highly prescriptive in terms of dedicating this money to OPEC contributions um and only let uh let that change on specific action by a future select board. Um, and on the other hand, um, there was some, there was interest as Chad mentioned in the reserve fund um uh in sort of providing other opportunities. Um, I've I am a little concerned about introducing any sort of flexibility here um that doesn't take a proactive response to the select board. But after discussions, I think there are enough controls in place that we can allow the flexibility in the language, you know, with words like we aim to allocate sufficient revenues and you know, there may be other opportunities for using this on in financially prudent ways that um it's 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 worth uh it's worth having the language be balanced.
What is our annual contribution to the pension fund?
Yeah, so uh, right. So our contribution, so to the, there are two contributions towards that. Right. So there there is the amount.
Pension liability.
I'm sorry, to the pension.
Right, that's that's ending in twenty thirty.
Yep, yep. It's so it's going up seven point eight five percent per year. And uh, that's going up to fifty million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty nine.
What fifty million dollars is what?
Uh, the contribution to pension. That's what it is.
Right. Is that the pay as you go part or the?
No, so that part, that that's
The catch up, how much is the catch up?
The catch up as opposed to the normal for the pension.
It's another amount of money that we're talking about.
Right, right. So uh, that that is approximately forty two million dollars. So that's evaluated every two years. Um, but the delta is approximately forty two million dollars. So the pay as you go is estimated in twenty thirty um at more than eight million dollars and and since it'll drop off back down uh will be approximately forty two.
And that will happen naturally, as as we approach full funding on the trust. The kind of the retirement board has said that it's those contributions will decrease. So it's not like we're going to hit a cliff in twenty thirty and all of a sudden that's going to drop. We're going to contribute less uh in the last years. Again, this is an assumption. Like, we're still assuming six point eight percent growth or investments, um, down, which is point nine, that's still high. Um, you know, so.
And are those inflation adjusted dollars or or this?
So no, so that 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 is based on the most recent actuarial termination is what this is required and that's and that's determined every two years. So so that amount is real dollars in 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 accounting fiscal year twenty third. So does that make sense? In other words, in other words, I mean, they're taking into account, for example, the net present value. I mean, in in actual, uh, determination. Does that make sense?
Yep. I just wanted to back to the the need for the policy. So since my time serving advisory, I've always understood that once we were done with catching up with events for SLOP, has there been some change in the plan or what? I'm I'm not sure why why this is coming up. It's because Michael didn't understand it?
Yeah, I think Michael pointed out that the policy, it was unclear enough in the policy that there was room for debate about what might happen next. And as we get closer and closer to twenty thirty, it's important for us.
So it's not written down in the policy.
It it was written in the policy, but it wasn't in the clear fashion.
Okay.
And we have so many needs in this now that, you know, this is like a money tree that that
I mean, this was this was brought up in the expenditure revenues last night. Uh, you know, Cliff Brown said last night, expenditure revenues, why don't we ask, we could, you know, you know, why don't we theoretically ask for um the pension repayment schedule to push back a couple of years? Um, and then once it's satisfied, why don't you pass it into life, shoot it back to the tech. Um, so that's out there. Those ideas are out there.
Well, I'm sorry. I mean, along those lines, my mind is just a little confused. Are you trying to um? Are you worried that there's still too much legal in that or you don't think there'd be where? Um, my concern was that there was uh that there was too much um in the conversations I've had since the Chaz and I think that it is sufficient.
If everybody's.
Has relaxed. So um, yeah, because, you know, I I don't need to alarm anyone, but I I do think um Cliff Brown's question is, uh, you know, in order. Um, and I I think that the argument has always been that, oh, no, 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 we don't want to change that because then we're going to, you know, it's going to sell the arm doors with the rating agencies. But I've always kind of wondered, how do you know that for sure? And are there communities that are stretching out their pension paydown? Um, and it's not made any difference in my, you know, rating agency treatment. Uh, because I know Newton is, you know, and I don't think of them as being wild and crazy, you know, with their finances, but they're serious and conservative.
It's it's a topic of conversation right here. So that means that it is important because they're asking them at our reading call. They always ask us what our plan is, you know, we always say that the intended policy is to move the funds to cover the open liability to acknowledge the efforts that we've made building the OPEC media. Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, that is a strength in our rating is how how much we devoted already to try to address the underliability.
And this this reading, those reading reports, oh, that's positive that we're dealing with the OPEC liability, the pension liability, the OPEC law responsibility with many communities.
This year exclusively, they asked, you know, you're not, you're not telling them to change your state. They 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 ask everybody, is twenty thirty still in your year? So.
I think what Newton is doing is 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 unique and I know we need to do it to I I wouldn't, I wouldn't do um, which is they're in lieu of pushing back their pension deadline, pension funding deadline, they have come up with a creative accounting solution, which is they have said, we can anticipate reasonably that we will start to see money come back to us once our pension obligations are satisfied. And so we should start spending free cash as though it is operating, um, which would and because we can reasonably expect it to be operating like um, and so when they had their override to fail for municipal operations, that's part of how they cover that difference is changing their policy. But as we pointed out last night, talking to expenses and revenues, you're effectively mortgaging a future, right? You're you're saying that you're vetting the money in um, and you're taking it out of one-time revenue and through creative accounting saying this isn't really well, because money is fungible, this isn't one-time revenue, but that's a that's a trick. Um, and it's a trick that's going to come home to roost if and when their pension obligation is satisfied.
Um, so I'm a little confused on what we're we're talking about. It's on the so what was the suggestion to move, or last night to the revenue expenses? To move the the payback to twenty thirty date out?
Yes.
Okay, so that's different than saying, what are we going to do after twenty thirty?
Okay, but then the other suggestion that was made was, and when it's satisfied, rather than flip it into OPEPs, give someone all the back in the
Okay, so there's so there's a couple of issues here. One is if we were to change the twenty thirty schedule, that certainly could potentially impact.
It would decrease the appropriation. So we wouldn't be able to decrease the appropriation, but it would maybe mitigate the seven point eight five percent that we have to go by.
Or it could also have an impact if we start changing the policy, right? And then there's uh another issue of committing a future select board to doing something with the money after we we can, well, to provide the guidance as what we think today, but any future selection could potentially change that.
Yes. And I think one of the, you know, again, we was actually, we said this morning, strong policies and strong procedures would make it, and with clear explanations, make it less likely that a future board would tamper with it unless there's a true emergency, there's a need to do so. Um, you know, it's not just a wouldn't it be nice, but you know.
But right now we have a triple A bond rating.
Yeah.
Under the current policy, right? That we're following. And that includes both the twenty thirty date and then whatever lack of clarity exists we're beyond twenty thirty, right? We, the rating agencies give us a triple A bond.
Yes, right.
And in our forecast, we include the assumption that it's going to OPEC. So that's where we're
It's maybe where I'm sitting. That's I, you know, I I know that it's going to OPEC. So how do I know that? I think it's because it's
We've been years.
This closes that. This is this says, you know, so if someone asks, why are you doing? I'm going to point to this, you know, we have pointed to this, but the language is quick.
Since we are farming the
So what are we being asked to do? Are we being asked to do something or?
Yes, there's a revised version of the policy in your packet. Um, and
Yeah, I think I've seen it.
Do you put it on the screen?
That's all.
Like, in our, it's in our unfunded liabilities policy, it is the second forward item. When did it get into our packet? It's page is five hundred and eleven.
So so the you can see the crossed out section here. This is what's changed. This is what's being replaced with the the section above it. So um, so while there's no currently, while there's currently no legal requirement to fund OPEPs, the town shall continue to follow its plan and move towards fully funding the annual required contribution, ultimately developing a funding schedule that fully funds OPEC's point, it was to a schedule similar to pension funding schedule and so on. Um.
And then, well, the screen isn't showing up on.
Oh, I'm not zoomed. Thank you. Thank you. No, sorry. Uh, I think we can share it on Zoom as well. Uh, and then it goes on to say uh that it shall continue to include the annual increases in the portion of appropriation.
We're taking up.
And then, yes, and then it should be, should also include using a runoff in the pension system to just fully fund it. So it did, it did say that uh already, but now there are a few key differences. Um, we're changing the terminology to actuarially determine contribution, which is more accurate because that's the correct terminology for uh for OPEPs. And then um it it essentially says down here uh additionally, yeah, there it is. Shall should incorporate revenue previously appropriated from pensions. I believe that was one of the key changes. Yeah. Um, so instead of saying it should incorporate the runoff, it says any fund, it's basically saying any funds that were dedicated.
And I think Michael should add one further edge there. I apologize, Michael, um, as opposed to um previously saying otherwise.
Yeah, otherwise.
Yeah.
It should say otherwise appropriated from pensions. You're right, Chaz, good flag.
That would be otherwise. And the the reason for this is just to handle the the unusual case. You know, we may ultimately fund our fully fund our pension liability system in twenty thirty, but for whatever reason, if our pension system becomes unfunded in a future year due to emergency, all this is saying is that in subsequent years, we have to make up the pension system's liability first before we can keep contributing to it.
You know, the one thing that what bothers me about this is that, as we say, while there is currently no legal requirement to fund the OPEC, blah, blah, blah. So the end, the question that we're in here is, then why are you doing? And and I don't know, it makes sense, but maybe there's, you know, like a sentence that we can add as to why this is important um to both the ratings and the loss of student national merits. Does that mean?
Well, I think the policy was originally written to carve a distinction between pensions and OPEPs, where one has a legal requirement to fund it and the other does not. That's why that language is original there. Um, and so I think it does say that now in a different way for our big, perhaps not to a layperson. So maybe there's chats or some of us can suggest and edit. But it did say, while there is no requirement, we'll we'll work on, we'll work to fund the ARC, as it was called before, um, the annual required contribution. Um, it now says to appropriate sufficient funds to meet the actual actuarially determined contribution. In other words, um, I think maybe that language was obs- intent was unintentionally obscuring that we really do have this liability we need to claim, you know, while there's no
We've had, we've had the pension liability for many years until the um so that the accounting profession said, well, you have, yeah, put it on your books, so.
The the in turn to the to the whole section, though, kind of frames that these are the two, the town's two largest liabilities. And so for the um financial obligation of the town, and that's why the policy exists is to try and address it.
Yeah. I understand the first sentence. So I just want to ask that about this. So did, does this help you? Does this, does this help you? And you feel it's a necessary change to clarify?
It's why we remind you every year that this is what we would like the strategy to be because this is something that will help us be in better
So this language further reinforces what you have been sharing with us for many years.
Right, because previously I would say Nancy Daly always said that this is because she was on the OPEC committee that crafted this policy. Now I can say, you know, the board, you know, has revised the policy and just remind you that this is what we talked about at the retreat and
and we're not running on autopilot. What's that? We're not running on autopilot. Um, we're affirmatively recommitting.
I think when Michael submitted the suggestion for my part, Paul, I wasn't necessarily sure I, you know, I thought the language needed to be changed to reinforce this, but the more we talked about it, the more I realized this is more, this is clear.
What, why, this is what we're doing?
Correct. This is, this is what the priority is more accurately stated. Clear.
Okay. And I do like Bernard's, I do like Bernard's suggestion that makes a little, I don't know if that's in the introductory part of that, but you know, making a claim, although it's not legally, uh, it's financially prudent, right? Right. Responsible for us to be doing this. Yeah.
Yeah.
The the other, the other option would be to simply strike those words completely because because it's ultimately covered in the third paragraph, but.
Right, as I was saying, maybe maybe you're right, Michael. The original language, while there's no legal obligation, was unnecessary even of itself, you know, almost as though why cast the as far
So strike while there is currently
Yeah.
The town shell.
Right, yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
Just on a practical level, a question I have, why isn't it required? So what happens if the municipality doesn't fund it?
So nothing right now, but it absolutely has an impact on that municipality's boundary and 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 the cost and their I think that's the best, that's the binary impact.
So that's sort of circular, aren't you? Well, I mean, and the real impact is, you know, in the future, it's going to come back and buy us.
Well, well, right, it it that that this is a liability that where they, where when health insurance costs, for example, going up twelve percent, right, and with or with GIC, that it's going to reach a point where, you know, in these municipalities that are simply paying as you go, that they're going to reach a point where they certainly are financially going to do that, right?
If I could add to what Mike had just said, David, I think your question is a good one. And the the answer is, it likely may be a little, a legal requirement in the future. You know, these changes are made incrementally so that they, you know, if you, if they had made both pensions and OPEPs a legal requirement at the same time, that would have been disastrous for governments across the country who did did not have that previously built into their financial plans, right? So these things happen incrementally and they can, it may be that that will become a legal requirement.
Once we did twenty forty, I would imagine.
Pension, uh, sorry, to cut it off, let's say pensions were previously required to be recognized on your balance sheet before it became a legal requirement to fund them. And then the same thing happened with OPEPs, where it was a liability that you didn't have to recognize on your books. Now you have to recognize it. Now you're expected to start funding it and eventually it will be a requirement.
Right.
Yeah, I I think Charlie probably put his finger on, I was just going to offer a more possible explanation, and that is that they're having these pension systems that are, yeah, uh, conceivably going to go bankrupt, uh, you know, over time. Conceivably going to go bankrupt, uh, you know, over time, all over the state. I mean, some in ridiculous condition, I mean, even Brookline is not in great condition. And the state did not have to face the prospect of having to bail out all the expansion systems. And I, I think that was a major motive of the policies. Uh, they don't want to be stuck, you know, you know, by community, they're bankrupt, they're going to pension system this time.
I, I guess my concern still is. I, I guess taking out that language, or let me talk about, may, maybe help, but my concern is that, um. People perceive this as like, as, as really the golden age, and there's some money that we can now use for whatever.
Well, well, last night during our revenue expenses, maybe apparently someone thought it might be something that you can relax. So this would clarify, it seems like this would clarify, this would, it doesn't slam the door, but it.
It, it takes out the, the sort of flashing red light that says, you know, we don't have any obligation to do this.
Yeah.
But, you know, if someone were to just look below the surface, they'd see that. Oh, there's a possibility that this is a source of money that we could use at this point.
That, that is, that is true, but if you look at the existing language, our current policy. But, but, but that challenge is true regardless. Because, you know, a future select board could decide to change the policy. I think what we're communicating as a select board is that we believe this is proven financial practice.
So, so that, that's what we need to say, if, if, we, we're doing this because. In, we, we're anticipating that in the future, our pay-as-you-go liability may be so high. Uh, we don't, um, fund the unfunded liability.
Or if he said something to me, that is consistent with the select board's policy of maintaining a strictly limited.
Right, or in the interest of maintaining, yeah, I agree, I could see that, adding another qualifier at the beginning that is not open-ended.
Can, can you scroll up to the top, because that applies, I mean, that applies to how you fund a pension. Okay, so that's really where you would want to have that sentence?
We are also inconsistent with our not tracking on fly, perhaps, this is something that we can. You, send us a feedback and bring it back.
Yeah, can I suggest one other thing? Um, in addition to, uh, if we're doing this for a bond rating. Also for our long-term financial stability, because that's really the issue here.
Yeah. Yeah, the border rating is a feature, the bond rating is a feature of our. Are you okay if we? Send us a feedback and then come back to the.
Okay. Sounds good, we'll, we'll take that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would definitely, I would definitely cut that.
Just move, move all of these considerations to the.
Interesting, okay, we can do that, you may hear.
Okay, so we'll take this stuff at a future meeting after, um, we've all had a chance to. Um, okay, so, uh, this year's objectives are going to be a little different from last year's or task force objectives. In that, they, we, we need to, uh, phrase them in a way. That sets a basis for when they're going to be achieved, because these are one-year objectives, right? These are objectives for our fiscal year twenty seven budget. So. So it really makes no sense to, to have a goal that can only be achieved in three or four years. So, um, you know. These goals will be separate from our roadmap that we talked, discussed earlier. So what I want to do is ask each, uh, like, remember, to discuss the goals that they would like to see. Um, in our, our goals and objectives. Uh, but also include a timeline for how, for, for when they will be achieved. And the steps towards that, does that, that make sense? In other words, you know, this is twenty twenty seven, let's, how, how do we do that by twenty twenty seven?
Well, but, so Bernard, we, it. For the other discussion, we talked about understanding what are the things that are in flight. Um, in John Ray's, some planning issues, I mean, yeah. Um, you know, it would be helpful to understand what things are in flight. Uh, so we can understand, should maybe turn up, should maybe slow down, um, and should we add?
Yeah, and so what we're going to do now, Tiffany's done a great job putting together, um, a, um. Basically a tracker for your twenty twenty six, your F twenty six goals, uh, and talk about where you. Where we are with these things, what we're using to measure the, the benchmarks there, um, what departments are handling them, and what we think the, um. The potential, uh, timeline is, or whether those things will be completed, or whether they are, they're potentially to move on from. Um, and in. So you have that as kind of a baseline for you to have this discussion, in terms of. The, the timeline for actually putting these together, right, this is something that we would like to have together. By just after Labor Day, which is when we send these out to staff, so this initial round of discussion. Um, we're. You know, we want to hear from you, your thoughts and your concerns, and we will take that back.
This is our mission, this is our mission.
Yeah, this is very much brainstorm.
Okay.
Uh, and then we can take that back and say, well. It's in, here's a suggested timeline, what you think.
So can, can I give you an example of what's least unconnected? Um, would be increase the town's available fund balance ratio to whatever appropriate percent. Um, as of fiscal year in two thousand twenty seven. As a step towards increasing, uh, the town's deserved position in mind with communities' expectations for a triple A rate. So, I mean, that, that, that's not a general goal, you know, maintain our triple A ratings. But, you know, achieve a specific reserve balance by X date.
And that's, that, that is all we're looking for, that level of specificity, that's, that's, you know. We want to move away from the generalized goals that will be able to move towards specifics, you know. We would like CX by such a certain. So I want to turn it over to Tiffany, I mean, Paul, it is.
Okay, um, so I've put this more into a form that can be displayed on a dashboard for fiscal year twenty six. I think it's important to keep in mind that most of these are probably not started yet or in progress, because we just started fiscal twenty six. Um, and on the, and I printed this out for you as well. Um, on the, the, the tracker, um, also put in here what I thought might cross over into fiscal year twenty seven. Things that, you know, might not necessarily complete, um, that we will want to carry over into the FY twenty seven goals and objectives. Um. Our, our goal also with the roadmap would eventually be to have target dates, KPIs built in. Um, started filling some of those out, we don't have them for all of them, we don't need to focus on that today. But I think the clear, clear thing we wanted to do with this tracker for today is demystify for you all. Um, some of the feedback we heard at last summer's work session, which is we don't always know where our goals and objectives are in the kind of status. Of, um, of where departments, um.
I'm, I'm just, a KPI, just for people who.
Oh, yeah, key performance indicator, thank you. Um, so. I, I won't necessarily read the action steps for you unless you want me to, um, for each of these items. Um, but have gone in here and, and kind of put, you know, is this a. Um, an objective that's in progress, is it one that is ongoing? It doesn't necessarily have like a clear, um, start and finish. For example, maximizing the use of Community Preservation Act funding for eligible town projects, that doesn't have a clear end to it. So it's an ongoing one, um. But we, we could try to kind of, um, do, do this find out even more and, and kind of set targets. Um, and it's one that would probably carry over to fiscal year twenty seven. Um. How would you like to approach this, or do you want me to read you some of these? Um, do you want to talk about what's currently on the list for fiscal year twenty seven? What might carry over? I also have some potential fiscal year twenty seven objectives that our office talked about as ideas to get the conversation started. What would be best?
Just one question I have, what is the difference between in progress and ongoing?
Um, in progress are ones that we think might have a, a more clear, uh, clearly defined beginning and end. So, um, reviewing our financial policies, once you've reviewed the policy, it has like a checkmark that you need to put onto it. Um, maximizing use of CPA funding might not have a clear checkmark, because you'd want to continue doing that every year. So ongoing is more of those ones that don't have a clear, um, end to it.
Yeah.
Would, would it make sense to, um, talk about those, um, objectives that actually. Can be given a end date or completion date, you know, because some of these, you know, are just sort of.
About whether or not it's on carried into twenty seven.
And how many do we have?
Uh, we have, I think, five in each category.
That's our twenty goals.
Twenty, yeah.
Then we have a list. So, so maybe, should we, should we take it at the, at the top level first and make sure that. I mean, this is twenty six, so this is all set, so I guess the, the, the first question I have is. The twenty seven, are these four large areas. Appropriate for, to carry forward in the twenty seven, or are we doing some?
And those large areas are preserving our financial health, planning for the future, ensuring better green or income diverse housing, and improving the public weight for all users. I do think those kind of broader terms probably will change as we continue the roadmap discussion. Um, you'll want them to talk to each other, but it's just a bit awkward, um, this go around, yeah.
This will be the last year we don't have a roadmap to work from.
You know, I wonder if, instead of weighing us down with the big list, if we start with. A discussion of our wants and needs, you know, and then maybe go back and someone can match it up and say, well, this is a, a carryover. I just worry, we're going to spend a lot of time churning through the list of twenty. And scratching our heads about whether it's really a.
Well, the list already exists, you already vetted it last year, so it's really a question of wondering, like, what carried into fiscal twenty seven? And then what else you might, might be missing from that twenty seven list.
Yeah, but what do we want to take off the list? What do we want to go on with?
Okay, so we want to start, do you want to take off things?
Take off, not because it's not important, but because, you know, it's, it's something that's going to require. At, at two or three years.
Whatever the reason may be, they want to take it off because they're going to like it.
Or maybe you're cheaper.
Right.
Okay, so start at the top, preserving our financial health, review our financial policies to protect us from instability and preserve our bond rating. While devoting appropriate financial resources to our departments and their initiatives. Um. We didn't put this one as an ongoing one, but we could, um. Originally, I actually put this as completed, but then we were revisiting the OPEX policies, I put it to in progress.
Maybe that should be a roadmap policy, a roadmap goal, and we should figure out ways in which we can disaggregate it. And, 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 uh, in, into, um, uh, goals that have a certain.
Yes, discreet.
Yeah.
This is like a value.
Okay, value roadmap, okay. Uh, develop a policy for identifying opportunities for both the acquisition of new property and the disposition, disposition of existing property. We did pass the Real Property Asset Board, we're working on, um, or by Chair, um, Fulman's working with Kara on the membership for that to bring to you all. Um, I assume because that membership hasn't been appointed yet, that's probably something that would carry forward into FY twenty seven.
Well, since we've, I mean, we've already decided to do it, do we need to keep it as a goal, like? What would, what, what would be the goal for David, what would? If it was a FY twenty seven goal for your committee, what would you want to?
Do you need that, do you need that level of detail at this point, or we?
I don't think so, we haven't even started yet, it's, it seems like it's going to be ongoing, they're always going to.
So we've achieved it, we traded the committee, it's been appointed. We're in her.
And just charge with it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving quickly, good. Appoint and oversee a body that assesses both revenue and spending and make recommendations to balance the budget. Oh, and I meant, no, to twenty seven anyway. Um, maximize use of CPA funding for eligible town capital projects, but that is ongoing.
Is.
More.
Yeah, that's, that's a, I mean. Let's see, we're going to check.
I mean, if, if, for example, we had a specific project.
Fund something.
That we wanted to fund something from the CPA, that could be a, a project.
Now, I do know that there's an ongoing discussion about the CPA and where the fund should be controlled, and should that be on here?
Well, maybe we need a policy, what to be on there is the awful policy of the select board.
Governance of the CPA funds or something.
Yeah, now that's going to be difficult, because.
There's a lot of interesting.
People think that we don't have the right to do that.
It could result in needing a war. Well, it may be a statement.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, review the town's, uh, pilot agreements with local nonprofits with a focus on access to facilities and other amenities. We talked a little bit about that during the roadmap discussion this morning. And I put on here, we recently did BU pilot, I think some of the other pilots will come up a little bit later, um, beyond fiscal twenty seven.
Well, one, one fiscal year twenty seven goal could be to, uh, open up discussions with Boston College. Uh, regarding use of, um, some of their facilities at time then.
Yeah, or have our goal that says increase overall, well, the pirates by a hundred percent. I don't think it would be seen like a difference.
Okay, planning for the future, continue the comprehensive plan process with meaningful and diverse community input into the project. While still actively seeking reasonable, sustainable development opportunities to diversify the town's tax base, including Chesnut Hill West and elsewhere. Um, we've done a lot of engagement on that.
So if that's going to end on four, one, twenty six, then we don't even carry it forward.
There's a different, there's a different meaning, I'm talking on my own, but just, yes, but certainly there's a next step.
Implementation, yeah.
Support the implementation.
Yeah, funding.
Continue integration of sustainability and natural resources divisions work into all aspects of local government. We've started to, um, do this by making up the division itself.
What, what are the specific goals?
This is completing the cart. Well, what's the charging for the cart?
Wait, uh, it's, explain what carp is.
Sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
Well, it's the carp department, carp's department, but you know, really what this is, is it's, it's, it's the carp and it's. Um, you know, creating and ensuring that sustainability division is in its final form, you know, that Alexandra is happy, that Erin is happy. That the other departments that are playing a critical role in sustainability are doing what they should be doing, having those conversations.
This is being done, it's, it's.
So, so I guess the, the outcome from that task would be. Some form of feedback to the select board that all of the departments are on board. And if we had that, then this task would be done, I don't think it's actually related to the part.
No, it's, I mean, it's, carp is, right, the carp will help. Determine the operations there.
And what we need. And the investment.
Yeah, and the other thing here is obviously two thousand dollars worth of sustainability, which means annual budget is now funded by a grant. In a F twenty seven, so, yeah, finding also perhaps one of our goal here for F twenty seven is. Fully find. Whether that's by going to the voters and finding money elsewhere, that's a wide word priority, and that's what we do, we'll find money for.
So the, the goal, the, we have to determine how it's going to turn.
And we'll say, the sustainability team has done a great job, granting, you know, maximizing the resources they have to go, hopefully in the operating budget. So it's not as heavy a lift as we might have expected, we'll be looking at the situation. Where we had to find a higher percentage of funding from the operating budget.
So Tiffany, Mike, so I have a question just about the process we're going through, so does this thing show up on the FY twenty seven goals or not?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm just editing kind of live right now, yeah, yeah. And I, oh, yeah, we'll, 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 um, wordsmith this and fix it up and just taking notes, live notes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, continued development of holistic hub-based social services model of assistance that includes, but is not limited to the final phase of the housing stability. Office over the next three fiscal years with regular updates, the select board on progress. We have the housing stability of Sellaform that was developed last summer, the Health and Human Service. We have the housing stability of Sellaform that was developed last summer, the Health and Human Services Department. Um, I think it's, they haven't hired yet a community resource navigator. It's posted though, um. And we also have implementation of the chip there.
Okay, chip is. Okay, I don't use the hack.
What's the KPIs for the chip?
Okay, yes, for the chip. Okay. And they go fishing with the car.
Right, so this is another one that needs to be disaggregated. Like, what are the specific goals for twenty twenty seven?
Yeah.
And we should get recommendations from staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have an upcoming department head meeting, so we think we can take back some of what we're talking about today and kind of get some language, um, that's in. Anything else on that one? No.
Hmm.
They develop initiatives to increase reliance, racial and socioeconomic diversity and immigration, including through marketing outreach programs, policies, and ensure representation of vulnerable populations on boards and committees. And implementation of the findings of the disparity study for underrepresented contractors.
That's a mouthful.
Yes.
So, so the, the, the Office of DEICR published in twenty twenty four a. A survey, right, of, of, uh, I think racial makeup on board submissions and time meeting. Of which they apparently only got one hundred and two responses, which seems like a broken, small number. Considering the number of people in town, just in town meeting. So I'm wondering if the specific objective here could be to, like. Actually gather that data and, or just. I wonder if that data is actually meaningful enough to, meaningful enough to actually act accordingly, whether or not it's still to be gathered.
Or should we drop it entirely?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, my, my question is. Why? I mean, it's not obvious, right? Although it sounds obvious. Why are we doing this? Um, and I think that's a question. And we, we still have to have an answer to that question before we go out and do more of it.
Well, I think the why is we've stated as a goal in past discussions. To have a diverse community, to reach out to certain groups that, uh, you identified at the outset that we have. A very small African-American population, Latino population. Uh, I agree with Michael about the importance of having some more actionable items within this. That sounds very macro level. And it's not very clear what will we actually be substantively doing. I'm not sure that gathering more data really would necessarily help. I think perhaps, uh. Reaching out to staff and seeing what they feel would be most beneficial in terms of being able to achieve that, whatever.
Or, or, you know, also maybe what we really need is. Uh, sort of policy guidance, why is this important? And, you know, the real reason why it's important is the incorporation of elderly residents into a number of boards. Where, um, decisions were made that, that senior community felt were against their interest. So I mean, that, that's one reason. I mean, another reason would be to incorporate more, the Asian population, which is huge in this town. Into the operations of the town, elderly. So I mean, these things like that, I think maybe makes sense, something that makes sense.
Are, are you saying that we should develop the necessary metrics for success?
No, I'm, I'm saying more that we should explain why this is important. And, and maybe, maybe the goal is develop a good, um. I don't want to call it policy, but I'll use that word, policy for, uh, integrating, um, a broad swath of the, uh, uh. Community into our board and commissions and reasons why.
So I think we mentioned, oh, apologies. I think we mentioned some of that in the public bodies handbook, and we could probably flesh it out. I think to your earlier point, Michael, um. We have just put the first version out there. We're going to get some reactions as people start to interact with the document. John's already sent me. Um, one update to the handbook that he'd like to see later. So I think we can kind of flesh that out in the fourth body's handbook a little bit more.
So maybe we don't need to put a goal for that.
Well, I think one related goal, what you just said, would be specific, is to figure out. What are the current demographics of our boards and commissions? We, it, it's been repeatedly stated that we don't have enough seniors. Uh, I'm not going to say one way because enough or not, but I think they actually do have a lot of seniors. Uh, my guess is that it'll be certain other demographics that are lacking in representation on boards and commissions. But it might be useful to know exactly what the breakdown is. So that we have a more specific idea of what are the demographics we should be engaging and target that reach.
Yeah.
Hey, cool. It sounds like, uh, fiscal year twenty six goal either is unclear. The thing that, what we're talking about. When we, we should, that's what we're talking about involves, like, what are we doing now? Does that mean? From this, I can't really tell.
Yeah. I, I have a vague recollection of somebody presented to us. About diversity in the community and efforts that were being made. I can't remember.
And probably related to the hiring, um.
And then the group that did the disparity.
And then the disparity study.
If, if I may, I, I think from the perspective of the finance department and specifically the, the purchasing division. As far as the disparity study and the implementation of that, they, well, one key thing that we really hope to get a policy guidance from the board. Is whether or not, um, you, you want to bring to town meeting a more article that will allow for a sheltered market program. Uh, because that's what the state law movement requires. We are to have a sheltered market program. The essence of that is, would be not necessarily. Uh, taking, uh, the lowest bidder, uh, for designated supplier service. But instead incorporating a consideration of historically marginalized communities. And so that's, I think, you know, that there are other pieces that were putting together and purchasing divisions bringing together about. Increased outreach to contractors, right? That we can do internally and, you know, certainly want to present, but that's a key policy that includes. That would be helpful to be implemented. Does the town, you know, would you want to pursue any sheltered market program or not?
That's a big question.
Well, I think we have good feedback to kind of break this up into parts and give us something back.
Yeah.
Can I add something regarding, uh, incorporating seniors into the, um. Boards and commissions. I mean, the, the thought there was not just finding old folks. I mean, we all are old. I mean, most of us are seniors back, but rather trying to identify those, uh, senior residents who. Um, have made it a point of working with and understanding senior issues. I'm not sure how you say that, but I think we have to get across that, that, and I said, then in, in the, uh. Uh, work of the, um. Handle for you.
I just think maybe one step before that, that would be helpful to know, what is the demographic breakdown of our boards and commissions? I think we actually have. Very heavy senior representation. I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing, but just is there a group that is lacking? I think we should know that.
The, the data is optional on it, but we do have a good, um, sample of that demographic, demographic data that we can easily pull a report on. Um, and you all can see, so we can do that.
Again, and it, it's not just where our seniors are board and missions. Because of course there are, because the people who can participate in town government are going to be retired elderly citizens or older citizens. Um, for the most part, but they're looking at something that is senior.
Right.
Okay. The last one in this category is make it easier to open and operate a business in Brookline by.
We go back, I think. This previous one includes a number of issues.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'd like to start focus on, uh, the issue of increasing Brooklyn and racial and socioeconomic diversity and integration. And the type, I, I think the way to do that in, in, in a way that, um. Is a goal for twenty twenty seven. Let me read what I wrote late last night. Uh, no later than July first, two thousand twenty six, using hired consultants or in-house staff. Have developed and began the implementation of a plan to mark. If Brooklyn to communities that have been historically excluded from the town because of discrimination, including middle. Including middle and high-income Black and Hispanic families living in the Boston area. Or newly arriving to the Boston area for employment in local universities, financial institutions, hospitals, et cetera.
How would you measure success?
Measure success by whether you've hired a consultant to work with us to, to begin a marketing campaign. So, you know, the, the, the first step is, is to get. And this initiative off the ground.
Or define what's. How the marketing.
Well, you, we need the consulting.
Okay, and, and, you know, success is not going to be a great, you know, influx of, you know, of class Black families, but it's going to be. Just beginning the process of marketing Brooklyn to, um, I'm thinking particularly people coming in. The law firms, financial institutions, et cetera, who, you know, come in and say, where should I live? And, um, you know, the, the heart, the, um, HR person will say, no. But listen, why not go to Brooklyn? And we, we started doing that right, right as the pandemic began. And we had a brochure and made contacts with universities and other, uh, entities, so and the, the groundwork has been laid. This question of getting it moving, uh, rolling a little faster.
So that completely would be disaggregated from the margin.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And, and what we're doing, so after this meeting, everyone will send you their proposed goals. In that format, with specific dates for implementation.
Okay. All right, um, make it easier to open and operate a business in Brookline by lowering barriers from construction permitting to licensing while pursuing opportunities such as business improvement districts. Bids where appropriate. Um, I also think this is one that can probably be broken up.
Yeah.
Um, did note in here, um, over the last year, our office has been making efforts to, um. Collapse license permits into common applications in transition to online forms. Um, we historically collected everything on paper. Um, some of those have already been launched. The others will launch later this calendar year during the renewal cycle. Um, the online system is still a little bit clunky, so there's still need to be kind of continuous improvement on that. Um. One suggestion I had on this one was, um, expanding this effort to look at. Like the transportation department's online applications or the building department's online applications and more carefully specifying them.
Can we claim victory on the business ones by the end of fiscal year twenty six? And make the other ones that you described separate goals?
Maybe. I don't know if I, I feel comfortable claiming victory by the end of fiscal year twenty six. I think it's going to be iterated.
Well, I, I only say timing victory in the sense that we have a system in place that will then be subject to continuous improvement in the next twenty four.
Then yes, I think so.
And, uh, at least in the financial plan, we have a category of achieved goals and objectives at the end of fiscal year.
Yeah.
So something like that could go into that category.
Yeah. And the BIDs are definitely something second.
BID is, huh?
Business improvement.
I will say, some of the feedback we got, um, be, bits in particular is. Probably not a good idea to make a goal at this point. Uh, it is something that planning, planning department is working on, but it requires critical mass property because it's. At this juncture, we just, you know, have, um, we will continue to be opportunistic, uh, but. Well, we're not a position there. There, please, we have, we have, it's, it's not just the business, it's the land business, um. And we're not a space where the landlords are willing to sign on and be checked on basis. So I think. If we're talking about specific goals, objective, like it's, I would probably not, I would probably put that more in the. Long range category as opposed to the five, the end of FY twenty seven. It could be a public running because, you know, when you so much landlords don't want to fall. Can you describe what the benefits are to a business improvement district as opposed to on an ad hoc basis looking at specific opportunities? So this improvement district allows us to coordinate with, it's basically a public partnership that allows. The, uh, businesses to provide services such as, you know, um. Certain verification, you know, trash collection, um, what larger management has control and so forth. And, uh, also plenty of things like, you know, uh. Events and ways to, uh.
Downtown process of business improvement.
Right.
So it's for people to bring the visitors and, um, you know, maintaining, you know, maybe doing a little bit more sweeping than what in the city would be able to do regularly.
Yeah.
They have events and farmers markets and things like that.
Yeah, the big success stories, um. Starlight Square in Cambridge and Central Square, which used to be a parking lot, is now a multi-use space, thanks to the. Campbell Square has one, um, focus.
And who, David, I guess the question is who pays? And so the landlord pays.
Yeah.
So it's basically a, an HOA for businesses.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we, you know, it's the businesses in particular that have been advocating for this in Coolish Corner for some time, but. Again, isn't the businesses are not the ones who have taxes.
Well, should have done that then. Businesses usually pay in taxes.
Yeah, I mean, yes, you're right.
Ultimately, but not.
They, the landlord has to say yes. Landlords, so we have, we have some landlords who are, but some are not, but then you need critical mass, you know, right?
It's all that, this is also starting to get flung into the context of Justin Phil.
Yeah.
Because there's a concentration of landlords.
All right, next category.
Okay, we, there's one more thing in that category. I think it's in that category. Um, it's new. Has to do with waiving this back voting permits. So what I'd like to, uh, suggest is develop a policy for implementation beginning July first, two thousand twenty six, which is fiscal year twenty seven. For waiving building permit fees and other fees that limits such waivers to the town for plan and other. Uh, relevant government entities that have determined what's like for to be appropriate recipients of such subsidy. Um, in light of the benefit, financial cost to the town of such waivers. The. Can sound like the issue is that, right?
Yeah, so you, so you're trying, you're trying to lower the barrier of startup.
No, I'm trying to limit, uh, building permit waivers to the appropriate situation.
Do we have?
Right now, the only, the only entities we waive building permits for, um, illustrate this, Dan, that, that I believe this, it's the H A and the town.
And so. But I was to ask.
Right, I was, I was.
You're saying develop a policy for the others?
No, develop a, a general policy on when we weigh your building permit.
We don't, we don't currently have a formal policy. We just say, you know, you, you, the people we have waived it for are ourselves.
Yeah.
Which includes the spurs and the, um, the hazard zone, which is a hazard company. Uh, beyond waivers, also people who may ask for reduced speed, right? What's the policy in that practice? We don't, we don't do that.
Yeah, so if you're setting a goal for this, the first day of the next fiscal year. This sounds like an FY twenty six goal because all we worked for is to be done in FY twenty six.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're gonna have that, uh. Or, um, we, we, these goals are gonna. Now between fiscal years by necessity. Because we're not going to wait till January, or July first to begin work.
Right, I'm not, I'm not objecting to that. I'm just, I'm just. I think. I'm just saying that's like, okay, so we're actually directing staff for this year, not just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Ready for next one?
Yeah.
Ensuring better, greener, income diverse housing. The first one's maximize effective use of all available sources of funding, including affordable housing trusts and CPA funding to build and maintain housing for people at middle and lower income levels. Kara did suggest a, um, API for this one, if you want to keep it on. Average town controlled subsidy dollar awarded for new construction affordable housing unit, deed restricted at one twenty AMI or lower. She didn't expect anything for fiscal year twenty six. I don't know what fiscal year twenty seven would look like.
Well, um, wasn't there a. Didn't we have a, this is, um, the last session, um, the idea of increasing the, um. Income eligibility for including his own to one hundred percent of AMI instead of what is now eighty percent.
That, that's not what this goal is. This goal is about maximizing the brand.
Um.
Uh, maximizing funding.
Yeah, okay, but it's also about, I mean, the, the underlying purpose is to increase, um, middle income housing. Um, middle income housing, or look for a town.
That's through the housing trust, the housing trust has the policy of AMI, right? It's eighty percent, that's what I'm saying, I do think it's, you know, wait, it may not, we may not have it specifically, you know. It is within the school, the housing trust, so.
But this is, uh, uh, this is relating the inclusion zoning by all.
But, I mean. When I read this goal, I thought that this was like, we need somebody to scour the world for grants and cases that we can get money.
I don't do that too.
Also collapse too, I think. Okay. Anything else on that one?
You got the grants under the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as long as you come up with language, it makes that a fiscal year twenty seven.
Okay. Support development of new mixed income multifamily residential housing in areas identified by the M B T A Communities Act consensus plan as appropriate for such opportunities.
What does as appropriate for such opportunity mean?
Kara did suggest two indicators on this, which was number in multifamily residential housing units permitted as a right. As well as percentage of market rate construction housing units that have an assessed value per bedroom that is or at below the sales price of market rate units sold. That are not new.
So that, so. Not much has been done, right? Well, because primarily because of the amount of permissions, like, um. And it could also be related to other factors like. To overcome interest rates and other costs that you can't build high enough or. Inclusionary zoning issue that's included there.
Yeah.
It's hard to know what, what the key drivers, my understanding is that the primary issue is just interest rates. You know, preventing anything along Pinkell Street.
So if that's not in our control, then. I, I guess the, I guess the question I have is should we have a goal here to. Work with planning departments, there's an opposing and it's. To the hazard street zoning to encourage more development of next year's. That's, you know, what.
I would do, I would do, I would do it after the conference.
I, I agree.
Yeah, but that's more implementing the comprehensive plan, right, which maybe a priority might be low hanging fruit is Harvard Street, low hanging fruit might be. You know, the third unit.
Anything else in this one? Develop implement and, develop implement, and I think that should say. Uh, develop implement analyze the potential impact of and regularly report on preservation strategies for existing middle income workforce, workforce housing stock.
What's this number something?
Uh, it's, these ones are a big thing, so we have, don't really have status descriptions of them.
Where is this one? Is this one on our sheet?
Yes. It's the third one.
Oh, that sheet.
Well, it's on the, this one too, I was just double checking, it's on both.
Yeah, I can't find it.
Isn't on the next.
Are you in the housing section?
Ensure income.
Yeah.
The full resources, the tracking complaints, and that's, it's on the workforce.
Yeah, this was, I assume this was something for the planning department, you know, to do, and it hasn't, hasn't been done yet. There's a lot going on.
Kara did put a potential. KPI for ongoing is estimated percent of year round housing units as affordable.
But I'm not sure that really ties to preservation specifically.
Okay. So, so this may be an obvious question, and there may be an obvious answer, but, so. Why should we be doing?
So this ties into something we talked about earlier, real, uh, opines, I feel personally, that, that maybe we focus on the preservationist town. A little too much, I think that's what is getting me, so there, there is a community constituency out there that feels. That yes, we want more middle income housing, but we don't like teardowns, and that sometimes teardowns actually have. The unintended consequence of making whatever goes up in its state more excessive, that's not going to help. Affordable housing, so some people come at it from that perspective, others come at it from the aesthetic perspective. Uh, we want to preserve this exterior, so I think that's where the goal comes from, identifying opportunities to expand. Um, middle income housing without a tear.
In, in other words, the, the buildings that are being torn down. Were by a large middle income housing stock here in town.
So, you know, we talk about houses that are behind Chestnut Hill West, yeah, no, those are. I know, I don't know whether they're middle income, I don't know who the people that live, but they're older housing stock.
Yeah, right, that goes at great risk. So, so it sounds like the, there are two goals here, and one has to do with an aesthetic goal. About, and the other one has to do with the amount of middle income housing. But, and what I hear you saying is that we shouldn't. Uh, this whole, there are twines to it, and I'm just wondering whether we actually have my knowledge of that. Because for example, the obvious example is if you have a teardown in a two family district. And it has to be two families, then the economics drives there to higher units, but if you could turn that into four units or six units. Then they would be naturally less expensive.
Actually for very expensive units, as we're aware.
Or they might be for less expensive units, because instead of being three thousand, so it'd be their two thousand. This is a comprehensive plan.
Well, good example of this will be sixteen Williams, right, sixteen Williams Street is. We're gonna talk about that in a, a week or so, um, you know, that can. We'd have a strategy of trying to retain that, or let the developer turn a tear down, turn it into a luxury, you know, condos. Um, that's where the rubber hits the market. Um, and I, I think this is, I think it's worthy to have this discussion, but it does, it does come in. A, a number of factors that make a play, it's a plan, our affordable housing overlay district comes into play here. You know, the work that I think we're doing, um, we're talks to. Perry, which has to do with preservation, as it's our structures, but also allowing additional units.
I actually like the coupling of this for precisely that reason, it allows us to. Try to achieve compromise with these various factions, so there are those who, from the aesthetic perspective. Are saying, we want to maintain this facade, it's important for the visual character of the neighborhood. And there's that other constituency that very strongly feels that we need more, um, middle income housing. And this kind of marries the two together as possible, so having that as a goal to explore ways to. Preserve and at the same time increase affordable housing stock, I, I see that as a worthy goal.
And I, and, and conversely, um, additionally. Having a goal to increase middle income housing. Could help support the half in working with us to adjust the AMI levels. Right, to, to, you know, seeing, I think it gets back to your original. Statement early in this meeting about, you know, we're becoming very wealthy. And, and we have, but lower income individuals and the middle is kind of just shrinking.
But I think a possibly another metric for evaluating success of that, instead of. Just sort of a raw percentage of affordable units, which I think is what planning is looking. Looking specifically at that type of new unit creation, but then an existing envelope. That preserves the facade, that tells us more whether we're able to combine these two.
So two, two questions, are we talking about income restricted here or just relatively? Cheaper in, in the housing and then the other.
I think what, I think what Kara, I don't want to speak for Kara, but I know the housing production plan. Redefine what affordable looks for our mission, so, um. The, the metric for an S H I, right, uh, where the ten percent is if you build a forty B. Although twenty five percent of the units are deed restricted affordable, every unit in that building, even though their market rate count towards the S H I.
Right.
Um, and so there's, there's a recommendation and, and the housing production plan to change our mission. But to only count units that are actually deed restricted, that may be where, where Kara was, was going. But I don't necessarily think it has to be deed restricted to be affordable, right, right, I'm, I'm middle income affordable, it could be the size of the unit, the cost of the unit.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think the, the, the structure. I agree with you.
Okay, and then, my second question is, is this something that has a clear outcome for fiscal year twenty seven, or is this more of a roadmap item?
Well, I guess, I guess the, the fiscal year twenty seven would be to, to like either develop. Or, you know, it might be to say like, we want to increase our middle income housing stock, our preserved, and. Want to maintain a certain percentage of our middle income.
Even as an initial step, I think it would be useful for us to track the numbers in both categories, middle income housing from new construction. Middle income housing from, uh, preserved buildings, and just see what the numbers look like. Are they roughly the same, is preserving actually working better, reconstruction working better? So even just at that top level.
Are we even able to measure whether or not they're the same? Do you know what it is? I know at an AMI level, it's like a hundred, there's some percentage of AMI where we consider that to be the. Workforce and northern house, I don't worry. Well, we want to be inventory, don't we, increase.
You have to find it.
Yes, and we need to define it, yes.
Okay.
Well, we need a definition of middle income housing.
And, and, and a lot of this is just not something we can find out, because, I mean, I can go up strong. If there's in a old building, say, how much money do you make a car?
Well, no, but we can look at the assessed value of that property and determine if somebody who hasn't been in income before. My question will be, how is any of this actionable by the select? We don't build property, um, we don't even, uh, you know, with, with some achievements, you know.
We could change policy.
Planning boards abuse it, the board appeals abuse it, uh, the state intervenes, I mean, things I've checked.
Well, we could change, we could, we could work at the half to change housing trust policies, we can impact, uh. Middle income housing, so we're, we've heard someone say eighty percent is the AMI, we could raise that to a hundred and twenties.
Yeah. Developer doesn't come along who's.
Well, you just asked, we just said investing it back, you know.
No, I'm just, my point is, you know, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll know it when we see it. I mean, if we have an opportunity to sign off on some housing, uh, we can move the decision at that time, uh, depending on what the developers willing to offer and what the market.
Well, you get, you get what you're asking for.
I would remind you, but just this past meeting said no to somebody's proposal, you know, for a forty B project. Um, which would have added an huge amount of, um, you know. But, I mean, I think it was, um, it wasn't commercial, so we're in, we're in. Right, but the whole point of comprehensive planning is to get out in front of the opportunities.
Instead of reacting.
And not reacting.
And the policy and zoning what you want. Well, maybe the market doesn't respond to that, maybe they do, but you're gonna, you're gonna put something out there. Just waiting for some, right now, the only thing we're responding to is forty Bs. Right, that's, that's what we react to.
But you just said comprehensive plan, which we assign to, you know, comprehensive planning process. Right, yeah, right, that, that is something that, and we could like take that comprehensive plan and say, well, that comprehensive plan says that we should do. X, Y, and Z, and then we can actually do X, Y, and Z. So that's to your question of what can we do?
We, we can propose, uh, more articles at town meeting for zoning changes.
We can, we can, if I hadn't wanted to.
Well, we did a few other ones in the last couple of years, more citizen potential versus one.
Yeah, yeah. Are you saying, are you saying, John, that since we haven't done this, that it's a bad idea? No, I, I'm just saying, we, we have not been known to be the ones who take the initiative, I guess, and. That there isn't any way that we can serve by taking the initiative, make, make housing happen.
We took the initiative to, to the M B T A communities, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the idea is that make.
We, we took the initiative to respond to, John, you're talking in service, I don't know what you're going for.
And, and the issue is not making housing happen, but to give incentives to developers, for example.
Yeah.
You know, eighty to hundred percent makes it more feasible for developers to build. A house because they get more money from the lowering.
But those proposals have tended to come from. Hey, they can come from, the thing that we clearly can do, and we have done in the past, we can do things that actually disincentivize. The creation of law, and we may want to consider whether we want to change those policies as well. If housing is important, then it may require changing some of the things that we've identified that are disincentive, sorry, like, like what? Well, the, one obvious example is like we took, it took six years to, uh, get to the permitting of. Three seventy Washington Street. Right, which just apparently just.
So all, all, all of the hearings, community involvement, and all the other procedures we put in place of housing is a disincentive.
Yeah.
And that, that's, you know, that's.
And we have to balance that against.
But, but that's actually a good example of why I wanted to keep that goal together of preservation with. Uh, middle income housing, because if that had been the lens, I wish you were looking at three seventy Washington Street through. I think we would have arrived at being unresolved a lot quicker than six years.
And, you know, and that, there's an example of this, and I, I know I'm not gonna create an opinion about this, but, um, a recent example would be. Uh, in Saint Mary's, above the old wine press and above Japanese, they own a, wants to put six, uh, six apartments. So he can do it by right, he can go up one story, um, and because. Uh, it's going, it's going through the planning board, and they, they said, no, bring it back with, uh, uh, other additional adjustments. Uh, for, for look and feel essentially, um, and so our, our process. To actually get something approved. Has a lot of variability in it.
Yeah.
And it depends on who's sitting around the table. Um, and I think that a move towards what we did in Harvard Street. Across town is do more form based zoning, and they're thinking about that, but it talks at Perry, I think that creates an opportunity for the developers to see. What, what the community is willing to accept. And it's very well defined, now they may not want to build to that, where they could ask for an exception of variance. Or they start to work with us to modify what those requirements are so that they can actually build to it. But the current system of bringing a proposal, I'm gonna kick it back to you with the back and forth, the back and forth. You get six years, um, and a lot of frustration, and, you know, we're known to be very difficult. To develop in Brooklyn, it's very costly, because it's so long, and it's unpredictable.
This also ties back to our earlier conversation about being proactive in revenue generation, I think being proactive in this context around development. Is greatly important, whether the select board has traditionally been passive or not, moving forward, I think it would be a good idea for us. To really push in this direction.
Just, Hill West is a perfect, another perfect example.
What's going on?
All I'm doing is, is just trying to get people to sort of operationalize what, what this means, and what you just described. Basically, the reason maybe one of the things we should do is eliminate the whole special permit process. And, and I think that's a good start, and everything should be, you know, built by right.
Well, it's just that, oh, that's your government duty, he's talking about maybe proposing. No forwards in my mind, I'm not suggesting that at all.
It works for her, maybe, well, it would work out, so, okay, yeah.
Hey, in the interest of time, I think we should keep moving along, um, I, I will say, so we'll, we'll talk about these at our department head meeting, I think. Um, because the housing piece forms such a big portion of the goals and objectives, it probably makes sense to also have, um, Chad. It makes us to have Kara also join in on the conversation, let's kind of piece through some of your comments, uh, and workshop them.
Yeah, and much of this is tied to the conference. I mean, this is, you know, housing is central to the conference and plans, so having a lot of goals, objectives around that, that would then. You know, the goal to make sure that we fund and implement the conference appointment is the next steps.
I I love the idea of bringing Cara.
Yeah.
Into a discussion of this, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Next one, improve resources for tracking complaints related to short term property rentals or housing discrimination and update rules and regulations for lodging houses.
Do we just do that?
The lodging houses?
Yeah.
No, we haven't. We discussed it a lot, but we haven't updated them anytime. So we do think it's a bit do.
We do need a lodging post. Right, we talked about it.
Yes, and there's. Broad conversation we have there.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll.
Yeah, okay.
But I think this one, hopefully, while we can kind of keep on for fiscal year twenty-six and maybe doesn't need to get carried over to twenty-seven.
Well, that would be great.
Yeah.
All right, continue sustainability division initiatives to help homeowners, businesses, landlords, and renters move away from plastic clothing usage.
So this is really the client or a big part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and so.
Alexander had noted, you know, some of the grant funds to um hire a per time energy advocate on this, um, some of the participation in the master program.
Yeah.
Campaign, um, keep on, pick off, roadmap.
Maybe the specific goal for twenty-seven.
Yeah, I bet, I mean, to complete the carp and and.
Just where is the car? Do you know, here down the ways, or what's the, I I forget when it's, when is it supposed to be done?
So I think by the end of the calendar year, I think we're supposed to have like, uh.
You know, this calendar year.
I believe so.
Yeah, it's already had its two. Sessions. So we should ask, um, Alexander and. What what is what is implementation?
Ignore my grandma.
Yeah, that that's really the fiscal year twenty-seven.
All right, next one, improving the public way for all users. Continue prioritizing investments in our roads and sidewalks with regular updates that select board on progress.
Roadmap and disintegration.
Is, um. Is it, is it? Is this the time to discuss making that more specific? In terms of benchmarking it?
Yep. Is there something you have in mind or just work with staff to try to make it more specific?
Uh, well, I I wrote down, uh, set annualized achievable street specific benchmarks consistent with best practices. For repaving and regenerating street services and toilets.
I guess to sort of to complement that, yeah. And maybe I'm saying the same thing in different different words, but. But to take our our recently completed roadway pavement inventory. Um, and develop a schedule for its improved progress.
With the two biggest issues. We've heard a lot about problems in our working on repaving, but there's been a lot of discussion about speed bumps. Yeah, speed bumps, I should say. Um, and bike lanes. So it would be good for us to be able to have a discussion like that. And, you know, to to either re to affirm or reaffirm or adjust whatever it is that, um. The the plan is, and I don't think I fully understand what the the plan is. I know that there was a request for, um. I think a multi-modal plan, which is probably geared towards protected bike lanes, and we paused that. Um, and we recently had a proposal for, uh, speed bumps, uh, in in an area of town. If, of course, these things aren't really our responsibility to fund them. Um, and of course, if the transportation board approves something, we sometimes ask to consider an appeal.
Well, actually, if I may, uh, just because this will update you and they're over on this. It was referenced, uh, and I was glad to hear this, at the transportation board meeting by Ron King. Uh, where transportation board recently approved these thirty-nine.
Yep.
On five students. That he then is going to bring it to the select board.
Right.
For our approval. So he. His his sense of this is that, you know, it's going to hinge on our issue. I'm not sure why that would be true in this space and, you know.
It's a little bit different than the normal process, though, would you agree?
Uh, it is different than than the usual process. It requires somebody who feels relieved to to go through point, you know, and then. But he he seems to think that this is something that should go through us, um, before it's implemented. Because it's, I'm assuming because it involves, you know, some funding, um, and it also involves, uh, adoption of new policy. By the time, this is, this is part of the street policy, part of the vision zero policy.
Yeah.
All of this is.
And we did just approve the visions here.
Okay, the next two are completed. Has to do with updating policies related to roadway repair and maintenance. Um, as well as implementation of policies related to traffic control and accessibility measures, although that's based on this conversation, we need to revisit some of that. Uh, but earlier this year, we looked at. Several policies, roadway management, maintenance, and preservation, complete streets, traffic calming, and sidewalk rent maintenance policies. Um, to better align them, efficient zero safe routes to school and A D A transition plan. Any comments on that? Keep going.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I did that.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, because I'd like to see us get specific about this. Um, I I've written this down, review goals. Of Beacon Street Biopath in light of M B T A imposed limitations on space in Beacon Street corner. As well as evolving standards for protection of bicyclists. And evolving patterns of Beacon Street bicycle traffic, including motorized as well as non-motorized bicycles and speeders.
You're going to send me that one as well? Thank you. And Bernard as well.
So I just can just understand, John, so right now, um, the the board has approved. Going forward, at least to the seventy-five percent design for Washington Street and has approved, um, I think. The design, whatever it is. So those are, that's the current direction of the board.
Yeah.
Are you saying, are you asking us to reconsider it or just get an update? And I don't think we need to have a goal to get an update, but we should get updates on all major projects. So what do you, what do you specific, what's your specific?
Well, you know, what we approved was some funding that I think has some matching funding, you know, socially related. To get to the design phase.
Yeah.
Um, which, you know, what's approved is approved. But, um, it comes up whenever there is a discussion, as they're going to, uh, at the next transportation board meeting. Um, it comes up in in connection to the M B T A's plans for all of these. Stations all on reconstrued. That this. That that the changes the M B T A is providing, in many instances, if not all. Actually, you know, elim- eliminates some old tourist trees, for one thing, which, you know, every vision of the Beacon Street Biopath was biking among trees. Um, but also incorporates some much more significant length of station times. Which then intrudes on a lot of the existing parking spaces, uh, in some of the areas of Beacon Street. And part of the predicate for the Beacon Street Biopath was. Oh, well, where there are these parking spaces, we can actually use this as space for people to bicycle, and we can put. Carpets in there and all this kind of stuff. So everything has changed since we had this original vision, which was based on just a couple sketches. Of people enjoying the activities of walking, biking, and. Bypassing roads. So I'm saying, we we've got to take into account what has changed, including what has changed in terms of. The usage by, you know, Beacon Street currently by a lot of motorized bicycles. I mean, we never even thought of, like, it might be. We might be saying that we might use this dedicated path for motorized pizza deliveries. I don't know.
And what are you asking either the select board or town staff to do? As the next step to take into consideration the concerns that you're raising? Uh, so I think I can help out in this time.
Oh, good.
My God, it's the R D request for funding from private path. I'd want to know if that's a select board priority.
Right.
If that's where funding should go.
Right.
Same thing with all, you know, the streets, the vision zero, the traffic coming, you know. Getting an indication from the board, whether or not you're supportive of it, or hope as we're trying to fund it.
Yeah, so. We might get another million dollars of class.
So all I'm saying is, is the board has already taken a position on the product. Right, so, no, no, we just, we just approved the funding last, last. Please.
Yeah.
All I'm trying to do is get to what you're asking. So what you're asking is an update.
Yeah.
From the D P W commissioner to say. Given what we know about what's happening with the accelerated M B T A replatform configuration. Does that have impacts? And will it have impacts? And is there anything that would cause the bridal path to be either negatively impacted or infeasible? That's what you're asking.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and and maybe the the way to approach this is for you. Prepare a question for a series of questions for D P W to present to the board. Um, I don't know, you know, the board needs to approve those questions, but just, you know, uh. We we want an update, but you understand what issues, um, need updating on. If we could do that, I think that would be helpful, and I I think it'd be very. I'd like to see that.
I would too. I agree with you, John. Relatively, I think it would be helpful for us to learn. What the plans are, if any, around dedicated bike lanes on Beacon Street, because it seems a bit redundant to me. If we allocate funds toward having bike lanes on the periphery. And then we're contemplating a bridal path, which will be get another bike lane. Me and along the sidewalk. So if we're talking about along the sidewalk.
Now, the original plan was to move, but right now, there isn't, there's, there's an unprotected bike lane along portions of Beacon Street, and then that protected. Actually, mostly all.
And sometimes, no.
Yeah, and then no bike lane, and all of that's going to be moved over to to the product. So the bike lane on the outbound side would be gone, and then it would be in the private. That's my understanding, because it would be a two way.
Right, I just, I just want to make sure we're not spending money twice on cross.
So what's going to update? I think that's, I I narrowed it down to say he wants an update, and D P W doesn't understand, are there any implications based on the changing environment?
Yeah, but I also want people to understand, part of the problem here is this whole thing has been so squishy from the start.
Yeah.
And we all we had were some visionary design sketches, and then we had one, one day thing. Where we took a space that was used by a lot of parking spaces. And invited people to ride their bikes back and forth on it, and bring their kids over to play on it. And after that, we were off and running, and now we've spent, uh, well, well over a million dollars.
Okay.
And they could be coming to us again in the next year, two years, and saying we not want the next million dollars. And we still haven't seen a design for this.
Okay, you're asking for an update, and right now, as I said, the board has already committed to at least this step of spending. And and the next step, you are, through this process, we uncovered issues, we can revisit it.
Yeah, and part of the funding is from federal government, so we update with food, you know, establish the.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, I think it's.
I think another way, I made this rephrase what I had asked for, is before we write the next check. We should, we should have a design. It incorporates all the changes that are being made to Beacon Street, to the M B T A meeting. Okay, and we should have a budget. Um, and we should know how much this whole thing costs, and how many parking spaces are very original. And how many trees are going to have to be, you know, removed, something, yeah.
Okay, so that's an action step. You you're going to do it. Work with Chad or whoever.
Okay, two more. Uh, continue developing electrical vehicle charging infrastructure for both our municipal fee and the broader public, including through public-private partnerships that are appropriate. If this one carries over, it did in the potential addition, suggest, um, specifying, uh, D C fast charging. Um, on this, I think we've heard a lot of feedback about that.
So are there are there specific areas where we can save our next date? We will have charging stations installed.
I don't know, uh, Chad, do you know if we can get that specific, or maybe it's just a conversation with Alexandra?
Things that are in the pipeline now, yes, but for something that is something will be for. Yeah, you definitely.
I think Chad maybe is to definitely be to specify level three charging infrastructure as the goal, because right now, I think we've reached. We've reached the goal for town for fleet and public charging, or level two chargers. That's, I wouldn't say we've done, we haven't gone above and gone, tried to do more level three charging.
And and you do have a lot of feedback that, uh, people are not very satisfied with level two, so, uh, being able to emphasize the importance of level three charging.
Okay, last one, ensure that alwayss are heard in planning for streetway redesigns, including those of individuals with mobility limitations, the elderly, and local businesses. This one feels like the value to me and the roadmap.
Yeah. That that was a goal last year. That thing we were just doing vague goals.
I think this may have come from Washington Street groups.
Does the, does the select board can book address this?
Okay, that concludes fiscal year.
Can I add one more?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I don't know if people are aware of that, but, uh. Uh, Sandy Gatsby, uh, wrote to the, I think, the select board. Proposing, uh, that we implement a probably, uh, a, uh. Initiative to get a better understanding of the views of the community at large around the issue of, you know, city-town, um. You know, discussions. And, uh, he proposed in in a, um. Um, he he proposed that we follow the. Okay, let me get this straight. Follow a proposal by, uh, Harvard Law School professor Lawrence Lessig. Um, to do that, which involves engaging with, uh, a, uh. Organization that Lessig is associated with to create an A I enhanced collaborative survey. Uh, in order to get input from, uh, town residents on, uh, town governments. You know, because we've been hearing a lot of, uh, uh. In connection with the discussion of, um, it wasn't become a city or remain in town, a lot of complaints about how inefficient, et cetera. Um, town government is. Many of these complaints have been vague, uh, and, uh, reflect. Issues that are easily fixed by the select board or or town governments. Um, so I. If you, uh, Sandy also said, if you don't do it, we're going to do it late without you. Uh, so I started to think, I mean, I think that's a good idea. Let's try to think of how can we sort of operationalize that in terms of the goal. Uh, because it's really a short term, uh, initiative that we're talking about. And here's what I wrote, and this was distributed, uh, earlier. Um. Initiating the connection with Lawrence Lessig at Harvard Law School to develop an A I enhanced collaborative survey. To engage with large numbers of town community members to learn of their ideas, concerns, complaints. Satisfaction and proposals for improvement, and then begin a process of improving. Town government in line with what is learned, which like they grow our community, uh, base. A timeline that results in a report for implementation by June thirty, two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, began the process in the fall of two thousand twenty-five, using funds from local foundations or other sources. Cover the expected cost of six thousand dollars, uh, or something along the line. So the idea is, um. We we could, we don't need to do procurement, but we could get two or three, um, uh, responses to it. Uh, with proposal, uh, and choose either Lessig or someone else to do the same thing. Um, and, uh. You know, thi- this is something that can be, uh, done quickly, and it'll often be a very, very important. Uh, way in which, you know, we continue what we've always done, and there is five ways to improve the way the government operates. Uh, the way that cycle all after it's, uh, so. Right, I'd be clear on that again.
Yeah, so I I think it's, I think it's a a worthy, uh. Idea. I would separate the two things. One is. What you're suggesting is we get, we get to put in the community as to what's working, what's not working, and. Continuously improve it. And then two is that that. And continuously improve it. And then two is that, that potential method. Which is less, I think he's using, I think Chad's citizen participatory is what I think is the. Citizen Assembly. That's not what he's not.
Not for, not for this phase. Citizen Assembly is a later phase. This is a. AI collaborative survey.
Right.
Okay. So it's, it's a different mechanism. My understanding, what it means is. Normally, when you do a survey, you develop a set of questions and you get answers to those questions and you, you. We produce some report based on the data that you collect. And the innovation here in AI collaborative survey is that you can get a broader set of. Uh. Inputs. You could have an AI process evaluating those inputs and come up with a. More refined set of questions towards the goals that you're seeking, including government. Um, and then you can, you can do another survey. Based on that improved set of questions and you can keep iterating that process. Until you come up with a group of action items that are both validated in a survey response and are actionable within a time. So it might start with, what are your complaints about government? And it might end up with, oh, we need to hire a person to stand out in front of town hall and hand out and, you know, being on the bedsmen and.
I think, I think it's still, it's still the same technology platform, the citizen assembly, it's the same methodology. Uh, but anyway, I saw I, it was, my feedback is, I think it's a good idea to give this feedback as we should improve. It would be good to have him man and present this and educate us a little bit. Um, about, you know, how he would go about.
Well, I mean, he suggests that we could get foundation funding for it. Um, and I think, you know, that, that, that would be a condition. And I think we should.
But you know, how is this overlap or not overlap of the community uh so we already committed ourselves to.
Yeah.
Uh.
Uh, it's, it's, it's more focused on. Uh, issues of town governance and, and people's concerns about town governance, uh governance. Um, I think the poll the survey was much broader, you know, you know. And the people like trash. Things like that. Uh, this is an attempt to get more deeper into. What is really people's minds about town government. And it helps us determine whether there are things that we can fix or things we can't fix.
But I can replace that.
No, no, I mean, they're, 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 they, they serve different purposes.
I would propose that we add the goal to defer the intervention. The goal is to collect the data to develop a set of action items related to town governance. And the needs by which we do this, whether we use Professor Lessig's new methods and more. Another mechanism or community, town staff is going to be charged with that.
But the feedback from this could actually help us with our roadmap, couldn't it?
Yeah. Or there's a section of our roadmap with the government, your governance, I mean, maybe. I, I mean, I think I saw, I mean, this should be kept to ten thousand dollars or less.
Well, if it's under ten thousand dollars, we don't have to go through the procurement.
Right.
And uh, Lessig claims that the cost would be six thousand, so.
Yeah, okay. Because I mean, all I was gonna say is, um. If it's gonna be more than ten, we can't just say, let's give it ten.
Yeah.
So are we going into new goals and objectives or, did you, were we just transitioning to that or did we finish your exercise?
We mostly finished my exercise. I had in your packet included, yeah. In your packet, I included a couple of things for suggestion, like the public notifications comparing, always by law amendments. They talked about DC fast charging. They talked about licensing permitting. Um, looking at these combined structure of cost departments more generally. I also had in there um. Review or potential implementation of a new TSB model that might be coming based on discussions and the expenditures under the new study committee.
So, um, I just wondered, did we capture um needing to fund the implementation of the compliance appointment?
Uh, kind of.
Okay.
But I'll, yeah.
Whatever that is, I don't know.
I think you should make it explicit.
It should be specific, yeah, I'd like to see that added. I thought we were just reviewing.
What was that?
To, to, to fund the, the implementation, which could be a, a, a vicious phase. Whatever that may be, could be used, John, it could be additional study.
Yeah. Are we just adding things? There was, there was a Coolidge Corner uh parking study. And I know there is now a book on those one and one for Washington Square, um, but that. Coolidge Corner one uh had some near term goals. That, that we should reduce, uh, we should adopt and report them. Or at least get a presentation of staff, like how they look forward to that in this year twenty seven.
You're suggesting more? In your, in your wheelhouse, um, have a uh zoning proposal to town leader or chess now here west?
Yeah, that's a good one, yeah. And uh, why would you guys put up with me and I? Um, I, I think this is, um, well, it's one that you guys might not have at all. And the way I'm expressing it is, uh, we should determine guardrails for two and a half to over one. And by guardrails, I mean something light, and this is just a hypothetical. Uh, guardrails such that the resulting year-over-year increases in local property tax revenues. Including debt exclusions as a percentage of the total tax base will be no greater than X percent. Fifty-three percent, four percent, five percent, six percent. Um, but the point being, they're gonna ask people to, you know, buy into your, um. Future overrides, and we are, um. Why not in return, give them some kind of a sense of the guardrails for this process? Because right now, a lot of people are sitting on tax bases that went up ten percent. You know, and if they think that we have no guardrails that would. Prevent us from once again asking for overrides, they're gonna go up to another ten percent, they're actually gonna start to reject, you know, overrides. But I think if they saw that we actually get. That there's a limit to how much we can ask them to sustain paying higher taxes.
Isn't the ballot question, you know, vote the guardrail?
Uh, yeah, it is, and we don't want to start losing that. And we want to have, we want to have.
We may already lost them.
We may, but I, you know, I think we, we, we want to have a more sort of um. Restrained, you know, our use of this uh, this tool. Uh, will be, and, and the more that we can reassure people that, you know, we use this when we need it. But we also use it in a way that spreads out the pain, you know, it's, you know. Increases over about two and a half percent in your tax bills. Um, I just think it would be a better, it would, it would, it would make our chances of, it would require us to do more. Careful fiscal planning of how we spread out these ex- extra costs over like two and a half percent. And it would also give taxpayers some reassurance as to. Well, they're gonna increase my taxes, you know, by four percent this year, but they're not gonna increase my taxes by ten percent this year, you know.
John, is that something you're airing out for this fiscal year or something to be considered after this?
We, at many a meeting, we've said, it's looking like we're gonna have that. You know, opting on override on the dollar in twenty twenty six. So if we think that we're gonna have to do that, why shouldn't we have a discussion of how we should use the guardrails? As to when you do that, so what do you offer to the taxpayer in return? In terms of, it would be this much, but no, no.
You know, John, I'm uncomfortable setting that now, right? Uh, before we even had a report. And feedback in the revenue and expenses study committee to handcuff us without having the benefit of. Just like we're having a conversation at that committee and what their recommendations.
Well, yeah, why, you think we could have?
Oh wait, is it in, aren't they, isn't that committee the guardrails? Because overall, studies have historically been proposed to people who are very, very conservative in. Um, you know, uh, your taxing.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know. Within the context of an override study committee or this revenue, first industry revenue committee. You, you, you can propose that type of, of a limitation. And the sort of natural conservatism of that committee is going to, it'll be an additional guardrail.
That's, we'll, we'll know when they finish their work, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think what you're, uh. What I hear you proposing is it is a communication need.
He's looking for a commit, he's looking for a policy commitment that says, here's, we would never do, ask for more than five percent. At any given period of timeframe. Or something, I mean, I, I'm making up numbers, but I, I understand what you're asking. I'm just saying, I'm not comfortable. Uh, putting any, anything on until we, we hear back. I mean. We don't even know what the revenue study committee will recommend. They may recommend something that we like, they may recommend something that we don't like, we may want to change it. We may not want to do anything of that. So I, I, I want to, I'd really like to let the process run out, um, before we start diving into putting something in all the socks.
I'm not gonna try to talk you into it, but um, just so people understand kind of where this is coming from. Um. Well, on time now, uh, I and others have asked a question. Because we always say two and a half percent isn't enough to cover our needs, two and a half percent isn't enough to cover our needs. Um, but we never say what is enough. What will be the, you know, number that given the history of how inflation impacts and how, you know. Changed means impact our need for revenues and you can, it was all, you know, determinable. By looking backwards, um, at actual expenditures. Um, uh, we, we can see a future where, yeah, two and a half percent won't be enough, but. Four percent will be enough, or five percent. And we'll never ask you for more than an additional four percent um on your tax bill or an additional five percent. Um, but we will ask you for more than two and a half percent.
So to make a commitment like that, and, and it's an interesting concept, but to make a commitment like that, we need to be able to, to predict what. How, you know, our labor cost is gonna be, and that's subject to collective bargaining. Um, we just went through the issue with police departments and get them, that was way more than, you know, two and a half percent or four percent. We're agreeing with the fire department that it was far in excess enough. Anyway, I don't, I don't know how you commit to that.
I think the other, the other factor that you'd have to take into account such a commitment is it would have to be relative to general, general inflation. You know, it's health, you know, health insurance. I mean, yeah, I'd, I'd be interested if you would be willing to craft. A, a policy, you know, like I tried to do with the open thing and bring it to this group and we can take a look at it, but it's really hard to. It's hard to, like, point out or identify all the, all the potential pitfalls when you're not doing something concrete. Well, it might, I'm sorry if I seem to be throwing this back on staff, but. I think it would have most, the most credibility if it was based on staff analysis. Uh, you know, what, what have our act, based on actual spending. You know, going back five years, ten years, fifteen years. What have our revenue increase means been consistently over time, okay? And, and, and then you craft, you know, a, a, a number, uh, that, that will be the ceiling for what we would ask for or in any. Overall, in any given year. I would, I would agree with you that staff can provide credibility on the number. But in terms of the process for deriving that number, that we take guidance because questions like. Do you take into account inflation? Do you take into account future labor costs? Do you take into account future like requests for capital needs from the community, et cetera?
His hands started shaking, so then you see.
I've listened to this with great interest because this actually came up last night. Revenue study committees succumbing on revenue sharing and shared services and. Um, I will send the full board, the memo that went out to that subcommittee, um, which talks about this issue. Um, because there are two kind of big. Structural ways of thinking about. Uh, revenues, overrides and things of that nature. And one of them is what we do. Which is we have the revenues split and we have shared costs and then we evaluate those and then. The structural deficit becomes unsustainable, we vote the voters, we ask the override to be phased in over time, so it's not just a shock to system. And then we looked at what Arlington does, which is Arlington says, what you have said, John, which is. We're gonna, every three to five years, we have a conversation about what we think our cost increases are gonna be. Our, our expenses, expenditure increases are gonna be year over year. We set those for the, for three different buckets for town, schools and special education. And we make a commitment to the community. You vote for an override. The, these budgets will not go up by more than a set percentage, this set percentage in a year. The difference there is that when the override is passed, they implement the levy at a hundred percent. Right away, as opposed to what we do facing it in a few years. And then they put the money that they raised, but don't um appropriate. In the first two or three or four years into a reserve fund. That is then used to fund any potential overages that might arise because of collective bargaining or. Um, unforeseen events or what have you. And that is a structure that that committee is looking at now. Um, as one potential way to address the question of reliability and predictability. Um, if an override is asked for, when, you know, when it overrides asked for, the parameters are. So now I have an understanding of what you're looking for. I want to send you all that memo and that's available online to the public as well, it's part of that subcommittee's uh, from yesterday. Um, and, you know. What I, what I would say there in terms of timing is, you know, maybe, maybe it is a goal for FY twenty seven because. Part of the work of the expenditures revenue study committee is going to be to pass on the recommendation here on this plan, which you can then take up. As part of FY twenty seven, as a part of discussion. This is not just an override study committee that's going on right now, it's a committee that studies more broadly this question. How we go to account for the structural effects in the future, what are we gonna do to handle it and what commitments are we gonna make to the voters? Uh, residents, um, on that one. So maybe that is an FY twenty seven. Goal, juice to, to gallop by the end of FY twenty seven. Um.
An override policy?
An override.
An override.
But I will give you the details of that.
I, I do think one potential challenge to uh what you stated, John, about looking back over time. As to what the town actually needed for its budget is that many departments don't necessarily. Uh, ask for everything that they think would be needed. Sometimes they're operating under. Those pressure of knowing, well, this year we're not going to ask the voters for an override. So therefore, we're going to ask for X instead of Y, which we really wanted. So I don't know how we would necessarily identify. What the percentage would be in terms of need, given that some departments internally are cutting back. Anticipating that they're gonna be that needs fully.
Let's just, I think.
Well, that's, that's why I always think giving it actuals, you know, um, tells you. Um, that's why, you know, it would be based not on, uh, you know, budgets, but on. What, what do we, do we actually have to spend, you know, year, year one back, two, three, blah, 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 twenty years back, you know? It does tend to be in the range of, uh, you know, an increase over time. Reach four to five percent and then probably repeatedly is that, you know, we're only guaranteed two and a half percent. We always end up picking up. Close to four percent in revenue increase, because we add to the two and a half percent we were back and we add things like, you know. So there is a number that we can sort of fall a range, you know, we fall within. And, and uh, that's different than uh. The, the, these, you know, unexpected year when all of a sudden, um, because we didn't spread it out. Um, people are suddenly getting to a ten percent. And then the first thing they want to know is, is that they kind of go up by this much every year, you know, and.
Can I suggest, can I suggest one more potential goal for the, for the group to think about? Um, and this may stress your, uh, your budget, yours, John, a little bit. Um, but, you know, for. But, you know, for FY twenty seven, consider having um a. A plan and funding proposal for, in total, assuming.
And and the location for it?
The whole ball of wax, yeah.
Right, right, and FY twenty seven.
Yeah, this is an interesting point. I was just thinking about it. I mean, I, you know, actually, you want to say something?
Uh, no, um. Paul has been thoughtful about bringing new proposals, so, you know, I have thoughts on those proposals, so. So I don't know, do you want to go back or are you just going to keep that?
We're almost out of time. I'm just saying to discuss, and I just wanted to put on the list, and we're gonna, we're gonna have this more discussion on this.
And you're, and you're going to send in your ideas to.
So, and so the one thing that I would say, um, the Chestnut Hill Commercial Area proposal that is on there is actually in FY twenty six. Proposal model in FY twenty seven.
I have one that's potentially related to Paul's, which is to have a proposal for what we're going to do with the U-Bay parsing.
Is that where the committee?
What, you have a committee? What's the timeline?
Uh, timeline is, uh, we're going to hire a consultant in the. Uh, law, correct? And um, begin working on, reflecting ideas from the community. But, you know, we're not going to be able to do anything until school is there.
We'll be substituted on like, like the end of best plan twenty seven, which is June first, July first.
Yeah, I do think, uh, yeah, we should be ready by then.
So maybe that could be enough for twenty seven, well, okay.
Might I also add Babcock Street parking lot? A consideration for what? Which may be tied to following up on the comprehensive plan, so understanding that in just like the twenty seven.
Maybe tied to the power station. Renovation, not renovation, renovation.
Well, I think that's always a slot.
Um, is that, I mean, I mean, in terms of where the fire, what, you know, say to relocate it to?
The schedule was. In broad strokes, right, you have the order, the order of operations is set. In four, one, five, many hours.
But I'm saying, you know, when Babcock is torn down to be replaced, where the firing itself. Is that's a street is one of the, or, or unless one of the options.
No, I think it's already.
The current plan is to rebuild on site. It's not to reverse that actually.
Uh, that's all I mean.
He's saying, well, maybe what happened there.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's the trucks, the trucks will move to other stations.
Well, and also didn't you just approve the committee of seven projects that we look at, uh, renovation options?
Yes.
And not that completely.
That's nice.
Okay, as you think of them, additional objectives, send them my way and we'll work with staff, department heads to. Revise them a little bit, get them into words and then bring it back to you to react and discuss more with Cara. Um, particularly on the house ones.
I do want to note that all you started with saying twenty was too many, twenty one, twenty gold. We probably have, when we disaggregate, we probably have thirty or forty.
So, uh, next, I have Park and Recreation Commission appointments. I'd like to take the uh, for our delivery chair and and say a few words about this before we vote. Um, so there are two openings on the commission and we have seven applicants. And I'd like to provide some background to the public and the select board. Uh, on our process for identifying the applicants that we seek select for boards and commission and committees. Typically, we start with a formal application and our interview of the applicant. We also have deputy town investigator for operations, Tiffany and Leva solicit input from the people who the applicants would work with. And uh, on the board or mission, uh, they are applying for and the staff people who work with that body. Um, also, the result of these inquiries and other information is given to the select board for our consideration in the memorandum. That that is included in the board's packet for the Park Recreation Appointment. The memorandum includes links to the interviews and candidates. And just one bit clear that we read those memorandum and we click on the links to the interviews. Um, I I assume that most, if not everyone, does that. In my sense, in talking to people, we take this very seriously. Finally, we review any input from the public that we receive uh at the select board office or to us individuals. We consider the views of other select board members during any discussion of applicants in our meetings. Which will provide useful information from the various select board perspect- perspectives. Uh, each select board member digests this information and comes to a conclusion based on their concerns, priorities and knowledge. In general, I think that each select board member should be looking for four things. One, does the applicant have the skills and background that is required to be successful on the board of commission? Two, does the applicant have good ideas and perspective on the work of the board of commission? Three, does the applicant bring relevant diversity to the board of permission to ensure that all communities are represented? And the work the board of permission does on behalf of the town. And four, can the applicant work effectively and respectfully? With other members of the board or permission and with the town staff that will be working with the board of permission. So that background, uh, I'd like to start the discussion among the board uh of the various applicants. Um, and I'd like to start by giving my initial thoughts. Um, and at least one candidate, like, I'm saying that. Uh, in terms of diversity or appreciation of how public input makes each park unique. Uh, her willingness to step aside from the larger Anderson Friends Group that she has selected, I think is important. And uh, taking advantage of the many years of service she has given to Brookline, I'm going to vote for Debbie Hatz. Uh, Debbie Hatz, her own, like her eyes. And will allow the discussion of the applicants by other select board members informed by second choice from among the many qualified candidates we have. So for those, that's my, those are my thoughts. Um, you know, this is an opportunity for other select board members to give their thoughts. And and help us all, you know. Make our selections, guys.
As the next most senior member of. Uh, I, you said it very well as to Debbie and Hatz and um, she is number one on my uh list as well. Uh, and I will admit that part of my decision on the second candidate to support um is. You know, who do I see as kind of a good, good match um with with Debbie in terms of uh. The demographic background of the person, you know, that would be brought to the board. Um, and uh, the skill set, you know, for those reasons, my second choice is Michael O'Connor. Paul, we're going to go in sequence of seniority, is that what we're doing? So, uh, we now have three votes for Debbie Hatz, um, I think that would be, would be, would be a great addition. I like the perspective that she brings and. You know, she has a long history in using our parks in a variety of different ways, um. Um, I like her, uh, her, her perspective to support for, um, you know, for the police department for a long time. She has a great relationship with our youth uh during that time, so I support her. So I, um, I like Emily. Um, I think, I believe she was recommended by the chair. Um, for, for a couple of reasons, um. One, I think that she. Certainly having, she serves as a chair on an existing committee, so she, she knows how to work with committees elaborately. Um, and I've been impressed watching her work. Um, she's very thoughtful, deliberative, um. Um, I would say she's very, very smart. Um, two, I like her, uh, her background, um, I think simulation or engineering, I think that's a, a skill set that. Um, that type of thinking um is, is important um for, for. Uh, Park and Rec. Um, I also like her understanding of connecting. Um, with micro mobility, so, um, you know, she. Uh, I think she's the chair of the bicycle advisory committee and connecting our parks. Um, leveraging our parks for mobility uh issues. I think that's, I think that's important. She's very in tune uh with those issues. So overall, I was, I'm just really impressed with her as an individual. And I would support Emily. That's my second.
So I agree with Bernard, John and Paul with respect to Debbie. I think she's an outstanding choice. Lifelong Brookline resident, very involved in the town. I like what she said about. Maintaining the character of each park and she has a clear understanding of current uses and future direction. Uh, so I strongly agree on her. My second choice uh will be Raj Danda. And the primary reason for Raj is I felt that. He highlighted some issues that the other six did not. For example, he addressed revenue generation as something that's important to look at for our parks. I don't recall the other. Uh, six detailing that. He talked about light pollution as a concern for some of our green spaces. That was an issue that was distinct. Compared to the others, uh, like Debbie, he is a longtime resident or reactive. In uh, Brookline Affairs, so he would be my other choice.
Okay, so. So the, uh, the two people that um I prefer both to mention and um the thing that I. Uh, also weighed very heavily was the recommendations of the chair of the, um. The Park and Recreation. Um, and so I am actually interested in both Michael O'Connor and Emily Jacobson. Um, Emily, for many of the reasons that Paul had spoken of and I won't repeat. Um, Michael also in terms of his skill set, um, in particular, um, and uh. The point that, uh. Uh, Clara Bachelor, the chair made about uh, uh, age diversity and bringing younger voices to the. To the committee, I thought was really valid. Um, we also have currently an associate member. Um, on this person, Rex, uh, Rory Howell. Um, I don't know whether um we are going to continue. What that person's, if that person has a playing term, um, or whether there is an opportunity there. Um, but, um, obviously, uh, reading the tea leaves, um, I was very invested with. Um, hats and her presentation and her engagement with uh, Brookline overall, um. So I don't, I don't have a hold of that, which are, um, and. With that particular nomination, um, that said, um. I'm not sure which of the other two I would hurt. So I would need to put in Bernard's for seconds since we sort of have an open slot.
I have kept score. I'm really torn, um. Yeah, Emily Jacobson was recom- recommended by our car director, and she passed pretty quickly for me, except that. Um, Emily did not, or she said that she would not give up. Her role on a bicycle advisory committee. Now, no reason why she has to, but I thought that, um. I thought that there is a potential problem there that she doesn't seem to uh, to see, and that, that is that, um. You know, bicycle and and biking has a very important role in parks and recreation. And. Do not see that role and the potential that there is a tension between her. Commitment to biking and parks and recreation uh issues, I think is is a problem.
So I did, I spoke with her, I called her, um, because I appreciated John's question. And first, there's many people that serve. Especially, particularly the advisory on multiple committees that conflict all the time, well, could be perceived to be conflicting. Um, Emily said she was very concerned about the status of the bicycle advisory committee and her departure. There was no one who would replace this chair. She's very, very concerned about the detrimental, detrimental impact on the bicycle advisory committee. Uh, should she depart? So I, whether she's hoping for that in the future or not, it's, for me, it's not. Um, it's not required that, that, that she do that. I appreciate that, that Debbie is willing to step away. Uh, from, from her role in a really a private organization, that's a private advocacy organization versus a board and commission. Or a subcommittee of transportation. So I'm, you know, I don't, I actually think it's an added candidate. That she really understands the issues and sensitive to the issues of not just bicycling, but mobility. I mean, they're very plugged into. Walkability and all that stuff. Um, so I actually think it's a feature not a bug, only with Emily.
Any other comments?
Well, you didn't say anything about Michael O'Connor. I mean, you did say you were, you know, torn between Emily and that.
Yeah, uh, I think they're both very good candidates, um. Yeah, the, the, the bicycle advisory committee issue doesn't. Puts me to the dance there. It's just an issue that I think she should be sensitive to.
Yeah, and I think, and I was understanding what she was saying, and it gave you a good reason why she didn't feel comfortable at this time.
Yeah, just one other potential issue uh for some to consider. So in the context of the twenty thirty roadmap discussion, we talked about including new voices. And uh, I agree, I think Emily is growing.
Yeah.
But she's already has two other roles. She's chair and biking advisory. She also is on Vision Zero. And Michael doesn't currently have any role, so I don't get it from that perspective as well. In terms of increasing voices that we have participating.
I see, I see that she's very long form, yeah, to serve.
Yeah. Do you mind if I, uh, ask maybe a question, which is, you know, just as Bernard now knows sort of what their positions of people are. Do you want to take a second crack at any position?
Well, I mean, that's how we get to majorities on this thing.
I want to make sure that everybody who wants to, because I'm sort of with Bernard, like I see the merits to both of them. Uh, I'm leaning more toward Michael, so I'd like to include more voices and also. Just the issue that Bernard raised. I mean, we have a lot of people who are involved with uh, biking Brookline. Who could potentially step in, so I'm not sure I'm entirely persuaded by that.
Well, not that, not that's currently serving. So I mean, yeah, it's very difficult to get someone to serve on. Uh, the board and then actually ask them to take the chair, as you know. Uh, but again, you can switch your vote. I guess the, so first, we're, we're in agreement on Debbie Hatz, so really down to the second.
Should we vote on Debbie?
Well, we, we do. Do we need to take more?
I'm sure, I'm sure, she has four votes.
That's fine, I, I.
Does it, does it matter whether we do it in two votes or?
Well, it doesn't really matter, but so it just seems like right now Debbie has four votes.
Yeah.
Emily and Michael have two votes.
There's a tiebreaker, right? What I've heard from Bernard is that he thinks that Michael is a better candidate than Emily.
I didn't hear that.
Um, no, I didn't really say that, only applying in that direction, frankly.
Okay.
Well, what were you saying? So you got basically.
Yeah, why don't we go first on, on, um, the topic, yeah, well, how do we do this?
I might suggest, yeah, voting on Debbie and then maybe everyone picks their top candidate for that second slot.
Voting on Debbie, we're voting on the position that we're.
Yes.
So there are two positions. The first one is open now, the second one will be opened in August, right?
Yeah, in a couple of days.
Okay, so why don't we vote on the first position?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, uh. And I call your name, Emily, who are you, uh?
Debbie Hatz to be appointed to the.
We normally have, yeah, done it that way, one at a time.
Okay, uh, so, um, John, let's go, yeah.
Debbie Hatz.
I'm on.
Wait, oh, yeah. What's the motion that they're voting on?
I'm sorry, the, the motion is to select a, one of the applicants for the first position.
Uh.
Open uh, on Park and Recreation, which is a position that is currently open. Uh, and then we'll have, uh, okay, that's, that's the motion.
Well, but the, well, the motion is a person, so if we, if I, I, I move Debbie Hatz to be Debbie. Well, but the, well, the motion is person, so if we, if I, I, I've moved Debbie Hacks to be Debbie Hacks.
Okay, if you wanna do that, I, I'm a little Debbie hat on favorite, please indicate by saying I, John Exway. Okay, and Chair votes I. Okay, next, uh, let's, uh, create to do this the more complicated way. Uh, we have a second position that will be opened on December thirty first. Um, um, and, uh, I move that, um, you know, one and moving. Um, I'm gonna go around the, the, the board and ask people who they would, uh, select for that second position. Well, yes, this is the one that comes open on, in August.
Yes, August.
Okay, uh, John?
Michael O'Connor.
Um, Paul?
Emily.
Um, David?
Michael O'Connor.
Michael?
Emily.
Okay, good, yeah. Michael. You know, because I think it is important that, you know, to. I move Michael O'Connor to be, um, the, uh. Appointed to the Park Recreation Commission, all in favor, John Exway. Well, Warren, David Thorman, I, um, Michael. Okay, that was that hard.
Well run.
Uh, yes, but, uh, uh, I'll say officially, the meeting is over. Not adjourned, it's over.